So let's call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM according to my...oh, 6:01 PM.
6:01.
Um, and I'll wait to do the mic reminder until we go to the open, fully open session. But I would entertain a motion to go into closed session and whoever makes the motion, if you could please read the whole motion written for us.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851c concerning employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, district administrator evaluation process, certified staff member leave of absence request.
Thank you Chapman.
I'll second.
Thank you Huey. Alright, let's do, um, so we'll go into closed session at 6:02 after a quick roll call vote. Fessler, yes? Howery, he is absent. Chapman.
Here.
Huey.
Here, yes.
Fisher.
Here, yes.
Alright, motion carries. We are in closed session at 6:02.
Hello. That's good. That's amazing. Did he really get into your assets? No, no, no. I do get it. I do get it. Oh, nothing. Okay, so you randomly, random button. Is that the bottom, under the chirp? Oh, she doesn't have a green light. That kind of reminds me of SNL. When it's the ladies. Okay. I love all the inside jokes.
Have to reorient myself here. Okay. So, reminder tonight that we want to make sure we're speaking into the microphones. I think AV experts would say two, one to two hand fists away from the mic is best. If we, if we're gonna look at something on the screen and we tend to roll back in our chairs, one option is that you could take the microphone with you. But we do have a lot of feedback that people are not able to hear us. So we just want to make sure that we're real close to those microphones. Thank you for that. Okay. So consent agenda items, I would. Let's see. Here we go. Apparently I needed the two minutes. All right, so this consent agenda contains minutes from the October 20th, 2025 board meeting and the October 20th, 2025 annual meeting and budget hearing. Also includes certified and co-curricular staffing recommendations and a certified staff member leave of absence. Is, is there anyone who wants to pull anything out of the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Chapman. Any discussion? Sounds like none. All right, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, and then there are, as usual, personnel items that do not require any vote. So that brings us to public comments. Do we have anyone registered? No public comments registered? All right. So we've got the McFarland High School Student Report. It looks like we have Anna Cohen joining us this evening. We're ready when you are.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Hello.
I'm Anna. I'm the student council president. Anna's done the other ones, but I'm happy to be here. I'm happy you guys got me out of some AP Bio studying.
We're here to help.
Thank you. All right, let me know if you can see my screen.
Yes.
Can you see that?
Yes. Well, it has an A. We don't see any presentation. Now we do.
All right, let me see if I can present. Dean made this beautiful template for me, so we can just keep using the same one. All right. Can you see the full screen there?
No, no. There we go, there it is. I think there's a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
Is what we've learned in the past, so.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Well, I will go to the first slide. These Chromebooks are. All right, can you see my homecoming slide?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this pass, I think you guys had your last meeting on our first day of homecoming, but the second week of October, we had our homecoming week. I might be biased because I'm a senior, but I thought it was the best homecoming I've had. I just felt like the student body was really connected and we had some fun activities during like the pep rally. You could see in the middle here or down here is Mr. Ackley giving a speech to all the students that did our live football. And then we had a good parade and Sarah Admin down here dressed up as Adam Sandler for our dress up day. Another exciting thing that opened this past week was that we have a retail marketing class and students in that class opened an in-school cafe for our, the first passing period of the day, where you can buy hot coffee, tea, canned energy drinks. I haven't gotten anything, but it's been pretty busy when I walk past, so I think a lot of students were enjoying that. Getting into some club announcements. DECA has been doing a lot for us. This past weekend, they had their trigger can activity where they collect cash and cans for our local food pantry, so they ended up collecting $619 and 2,110 cans. And then you guys heard about their blackout to block out cancer football game. They ended up raising $1,055 from the miracle minute where they walk around with buckets and collect money and then also $361 from the volley for a cure game for the UW Carbone Cancer Center. So that's cool. Girl love, they had a seminar for students about teen dating violence. They're represented from the Domestic Abuse and. Last week, and they said they learned a lot. They've been doing it every year, I think. I think it's helpful for students that go. Moving into our performing arts. This coming weekend, we have the performance of It's a Wonderful Life, which is a radio play. And then the next weekend, we have a choir cabaret where we sing and dance and do all that fun stuff. There's skits in between and some low performances. And those are both from the PAC and you can get tickets on the PAC website. We've had some exciting athletics this past weekend. Girls Cross Country got second at state this Saturday. And then from our boys' cross country team, Henry Piet qualified to go and got 11th place individually. And then our boys soccer team qualified for the state tournament to play this Friday in Marquette after beating Edgewood this past Saturday for the sectional championship. And then just to end it off about some student council events. We, our staff lounge had a broken Keurig and they wanted a toaster. So student council got them a new Keurig and a toaster, and then we made this little coffee bar you can see with syrups and foam cups and creamers that they've been able to enjoy. And then coming up on Veterans Day, we have our annual Veterans Day breakfast where we invite veterans in our community to have breakfast with us and kind of just tell them a little bit about their experience as a veteran. And it's one of my favorite events of the year, so that's really exciting that it's coming up and it's just to honor them and yeah, have a good breakfast and connect with our community. That is everything I have for today. Does anyone have any questions at all?
No, thank you so much.
All right. Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate you listening and being here and thanks for having me.
Of course. Thanks for coming.
Get back to AP Bio.
Yeah. We didn't delay you too much.
Sounds good.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your night, guys.
You too. Okay. Now moving to our informational items, and first up, we have the youth center report. Yeah. Hi, Sean.
Good evening.
Hello. That's true. The microphone recommendation does apply to you as well.
Okay, thanks for listening. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for having us here tonight. I'll just introduce myself quickly. I know most of you and I got to meet a couple of you, probably for the first time tonight, but I'm Sean Diller. I live here in McFarland. I've lived here with my wife, who's in attendance. We've lived here since 2002. My wife Katie's a middle school teacher and that's really how I got involved at the youth center many years ago. I've been a volunteer there since 2004 and I've been the youth center board president since 2005. So I've had a long tenure there and it's, it's been a great honor to be a part of the organization. And we just, excuse me, are really proud of everything going on down there. And we'll go through it tonight, so, yeah. The youth center, yeah, that's just a picture of Kirsten Johnson, who's our staff director. I'll introduce her on one of these other slides coming up. And a lot of the kids in front of the center, for those that don't know, the center is right across the street here in what is actually the old village library. If you've been around here long enough, that was our tiny little library. I guess there was some other library even before that one, I've been told, but when we moved here, that was our, our little library, so. Okay, some quick facts about the youth center. We have been around since 1998. Youth center history is that we were started actually by a bunch of high school students and they worked with their advisors, with stakeholders in the community to really provide an answer for a need that was out there for programming, safe after. really provide an answer for a need that was out there for programming, uh, safe after-school space for middle school age students. And I I don't think they were alone in doing that. My understanding is at the time Kathleen Falk was the Dane County, um, executive. And through her administration, they were really pushing a lot, uh, of this in Dane County, trying to, uh, you know, get this need identified and taken care of through things like youth centers. So, uh, McFarland did a great job, uh, launching ours. And we have been open ever since in, you know, various forms or what have you, and and we had a different spot in the regular part of the strip mall over there originally until about two thousand and twelve or so, when we moved into our current building, but the youth center has existed, uh, in essence since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, just for those who may not know, even if you're watching at home, we are open every weekday. Um, unless there's, you know, holiday or a special event or something, but during the school year, we, uh, try and be open from three to six P M. I know the middle school has shifted hours. They don't really get out that early. Um, but that's that's what we advertise, uh, is three to six P M. Uh, and we are actually open to anybody who's middle school age. We actually do get a couple of kids that come in that are either doing charter school or from Madison School District or what have you, so. Um, three to six, uh, during the summer, we're open from one to five P M. Uh, and then we actually apply those hours, uh, when you all have like a staff development day or something like that where it's not a holiday, but the kids, you know, may be looking for something to do, uh, they don't have to go to school, uh, again, because of staff in service or what have you. So we shift those hours one to five P M uh, as well. And that's, uh, actually in our contract with Dane County, they try and, uh, get that consistency across this county for all youth centers. Uh, but it actually makes a lot of sense to us, you know, it's, uh, it's kind of neat to watch the funnel of kids just kind of come down the hill from middle school right towards the youth center, uh, after their day is over at school. So, um, our attendance, uh, you know, traditional attendance levels for us, um, when things are going well, you know, COVID was a a huge exception, uh, but we try, uh, and get to a target of about twenty to twenty-five kids a day uh, after school, uh, during the school year. It is less, uh, attended during the summer. I know that might seem counterintuitive, like, hey, it's summer, you know, da-da-da, but I think it's probably mostly that funnel effect, you know, coming from school. Whereas in the summer, well, one, kids are, you know, like, kids are on vacations at various times, and there's just other things to do and it's nice outside and stuff like that, too. So typically the school year, um, is our biggest, uh, attendance peak. Um, are there any questions about this slide before I move on? Or else we'll just, we'll get to staffing here. Feel free to save your questions for the end, too. It's totally fine. Alright, staffing. Kirsten Johnson, uh, she's not here this evening. Um, she started with us, uh, last March, so about seven months ago now. Uh, before her, we had had Sean Close for about two and a half years, and before him, we had Megan Beckler, uh, for about four and a half years. So Kirsten's relatively new. Uh, she came from Madison West where she was, uh, one of their administrative assistants. She handled all the attendance stuff. She handled their whole graduation ceremony. As you guys might know, that is a huge school, like two thousand kids, so a lot on her, uh, shoulders at that school. Uh, uh, her background, uh, at some other jobs she had had, uh, seemed well-suited, uh, for like a youth center director and combined with her administrative pedigree there. So, uh, we made her an offer and she's been with us ever since then. And she's doing a great job over there. Kids are super enthusiastic, uh, to have her. She's really, you know, building those relationships uh, with the kids, which I would say is the number one factor in our attendance. Like anytime we go through a transition, our attendance usually dips for a number of months. And as the kids start to know and like and trust the the new staff that we have, that's really what builds those attendance numbers, uh, back up. So she's doing a great job of that. And, uh, things are going quite well. Okay, we can keep going. Uh, programming. Uh, we do a combination of structured and structured programming options each day. So when the youth center started, uh, back in the late nineties and really throughout, say, the mid-two thousands, we were mostly unstructured. We had computers, video games, just chill space to chat with your friends, pool table, ping pong, things like that. Kids would come in, kind of decide what they want to do. We continue to offer all those kinds of activities. Uh, but starting about two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, uh, the county really started pushing the different youth centers to adopt more structured programming. Our board thought that made total sense. We saw the research behind it, um, in terms of it's called asset building, uh, for youth development. The more touch points they get. They're certainly getting some through the unstructured programs, but they get even more through structured programming. So our board decided to make a change, an intentional change, and really institute, uh, that approach with structured programming. What that meant for us was was really trying to get a different type of staff in there. You know, one that was, um, able to plan and execute programming for this age of, uh, child development. Uh, you know, the wages had to go up to kind of track those people, uh, that we could get in there and do that kind of program, but it was it was a great change. We actually tracked the stats. I don't even think the county has required the tracking for a long time, but our board really loves it. We love tracking those stats and kind of driving towards, you know, all these asset hours that we're accumulating by having numbers of kids, getting exposed to number of hours of programming, you know, that we are structuring. Um, kind of, it's almost like a little secret. They don't, they think they're just having fun, but little do they know, it's intentional, you know, it's like fun with child development, uh, strategy. So uh, yeah, we're building up all those asset hours. We actually, um, quantify just the raw asset hours and then we take a couple of subsets that we like to focus on, what we call leadership hours. Uh, where kids are participating, like we call it our youth councils, kind of like student council, or if they're helping lead a program or leading a service activity, we we kind of add those as additional metrics that we track, and then the same for service hours. Anytime the kids are participating in a community service project. A lot of them we just do at the center. We'll get, uh, involve the senior services, make bags, uh, like little decorative bags for senior meals and stuff like that. Sometimes we go out of the center. Uh, usually we like to go on Martin Luther King Day of Service in January, go out and do some leadership and service activities outside the center. Um, there have been times in the past, and I, I know people are tired of hearing, before COVID, but before COVID, we used to go into some of the senior living, uh, spaces in town here and do bingo and things like that. So those would be, uh, examples of off-site service activities, but again, that's a metric we like to track. We would like to push our staff to plan at least one and hopefully two service programs, uh, every month, just to kind of, you know, expose the kids to that and and really expose them to the 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 honor and pleasure of doing it. You know, it's not just work like, hey, make these bags for seniors. It's like they really see the reward. Someone thanks them, you know, they'll get a, uh, an acknowledgement uh, from from Katie at the senior services. They'll maybe get a thank you card back that's read off to them, you know, about people who are receiving those things. We had an amazing student a couple of years ago. She's at near high school now, uh, Cyan carried in and she organized a grant. Uh, the grant was awarded. It was for a couple of thousand dollars and the service projects tied to the grant were about building little toiletry kits for people that are experiencing, uh, transient, like homelessness and stuff. Um, and then, uh, bringing those to one of the centers in downtown Madison for distribution and stuff, and what, what, just an amazing um, full cycle there, you know, of a service project and and getting the acknowledgement and and hopefully the rewarding feeling, you know, that she got of that and all the kids that helped put those kids together and stuff, so. It's really amazing. Um, we do do special events. Uh, we try and do field trips. We're a little limited there. We don't have a bus or something like that, so it's, you know, whatever staff and parents can drive to a reasonable place. Maybe the Dells like once a year in the summer, but most of the time it's walk down to Spartan Bowl or maybe walk to, uh, up and get a cup of coffee or what have you at, uh, Grace or McFarland House once in a while. Um, we do some in-house special events, so we just had a Halloween, uh, movie night, like an outdoor movie night a couple of weeks ago. Uh, where the weather cooperated, so we sat outside with a little projector the kids did and, uh, watched a movie with staff. That was pretty cool. Uh, we'll occasionally, you know, have other nights like that, too. I know this month they're planning a give back to kids party. Uh, where we've actually allocated some funds for, you know, like small prizes for kids and stuff, and they're they're earning those, their chances for those prizes with, uh, good behavior, with contributing on programming, stuff like that. They're getting little, almost like raffle coupons uh, as they do these good deeds over the last few weeks. And then they'll be able to put those into different buckets and then try and win some of these little cool prizes we've got. Uh, Kirsten's got set up for the party, so that's kind of this month's, uh, special event. We do try and hit a regular cadence. You can see in the bottom half of that slide, uh, we do arts and crafts. We do like science, discovery type things against service. Uh, we mix in a free day and then the one I've always enjoyed seeing the results of is the cooking day. We used to call it Fresh Food Fridays. And again, like, you know, a lot of kids just have no idea how to even make a box of macaroni at this age, right? So if nothing else, they're learning some fundamental skills and then we make fun stuff, too, but we also try and show them some healthy stuff, you know, in some of these events and, uh, you know, not everything has to be a cookie or a brownie or mac and cheese. We can mix in some, uh, you know, fruit salads and stuff like that, too, so. I think they really enjoy it, you know, they just enjoy working with the ingredients and coming up with the ideas and looking online for recipes and stuff like that. So that's just been an an awesome steadfast activity we've had really for almost twenty years now is Fresh Food Fridays.
I think there were some goods at the barbecue that were made by the kids, wasn't there?
Yes, yep, yep, some of the treats there, yep.
I think it was the cookies.
Yep. Absolutely.
I'm a sucker for sweets.
And now I'm hungry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, yeah, here's just a, you know, snapshot of what, uh, we communicate out to our parents. We have everybody on an email list. I know the school put this on, uh, at the end of their announcements. Uh, we'll put it, uh, on our website, of course. We have a Facebook page. We're starting to use Instagram. I don't think we're in the TikTok world yet because we're trying to figure out if that's the right fit for us. Um, and there's some other things there that are a little harder to control, as many of you probably know, so that one's not quite as straightforward, but we all just say we have channels to communicate this calendar, too, including just typing it to the front door. And I I think one thing I'd like to point out here is again, the rhythm, the cadence, which is great for parents. You can look ahead and know what's going on. Uh, and if if your kid is one that goes every day, great, you know what they're doing. If your kid is one, um, that, hey, they really love going for Fresh Food Fridays, okay. You see when it's going to be and you kind of know, you can have that talk with your child about when to go and when to be there. Um, you know, certainly things come up and sometimes we have to pivot here and there, but we try and make announcements about that and get the word out to if staff is sick or if you know, something fell through on a particular program, but we try and stick to this, uh, as well as we can because we do view it as as sort of our promise for the month of what we're going to deliver for programming. Okay, now the fun part, all the photos. We have, uh, on this first photo, just, uh, some of the gals there in front of our old youth center sign that we've had for many, many years, and the kids like to go up and sign it in Sharpie as they come through the center. Uh, the next slide, uh, just showing again some of the kind of passive activities we had, the, I call these the unstructured things, right? Air hockey, pool, foosball, things like that. We've had some awesome donations from community members over the year, like, and not the pool table, but the foosball, definitely, and the air hockey have have come from different community members, uh, donating them. Connect Four, video games. Yep. Good there. We can keep going, Angie. Um, this next one is a a few photos of a service project that we teamed up with the McFarland Lions Club to do. We've done it, I think, three times now over the last couple of years. It's called the Nectrex, uh, Plastic Recycling. That's a firm. And so what we do, uh, the Lions kind of coordinate different other service groups in the community that'll take it on. Each each group will take a turn for six or eight weeks. And you collect, it used to be five hundred pounds, now it's a thousand pounds of plastic bags. So all those bags you guys are dropping off at Pick and Save in the library and stuff, this is where they end up into this program. Uh, and they get sorted and weighed, and then they go into a big trailer that I think is maybe over at Pick and Save. Um, and once your service group, so in our case, the youth center, has accumulated that thousand pounds, um, then that's the end of the project for us, but what we get is a nice, uh, one of those nice benches, those real sturdy, like, uh, composite plastic benches, so they use some of the raw material that we've gathered to mold it actually into our our own bench. So we've got a couple of those benches now, and I think we're going to give this last one that we got up to the middle school. Uh, because we're, there's only so many benches we can fit in the youth center, so this, this one, the next one's going, uh, we worked with Jamie and Jean up there to get it, and it's going to go up to the middle school, so. But we'll put a nice little plaque on it, say donated by McFarland Youth Center. All the kids working hard, and so, yeah, it's been a cool project. I mean, it's it's definitely some work to run around and gather it all. Some days I feel like we're the, uh, industrial part of their whole, uh, business there, but it's fine. The kids are learning a little bit out recycling and sorting and effort and stuff like that, so it's been a good project to do. Okay, next one, uh, just again, some passive activities. We have, uh, jigsaw puzzles from time to time. People bring them in. The library's got an exchange program. I think I saw another one at the Village Hall, too, that there's a a bore, um, shelf you can trade puzzles on. Uh, science club, we do all kinds of things. This one was like a Lego donation that we got, so kids are doing Legos one day. We'll get kits. We've done like owl pellet dissection in the past. I mean, toothpick bridges, you you name it, like, kids like the little fun science projects, especially when like little slime, they love making the slime or they love doing the Mentos thing with the Coke, you know, anything that like fizzes or I don't want to use the word explode, but you know, when there's action going on, the kids really like those kind of science projects, so. Yeah, you know, science club, we've we've kind of broadened it. Now we call it like Discovery Day because there's other cool things that maybe don't fit into the neat little box of what you'd call science, but just cool things that we've brought to the center to try and get the kids interested in, you know, just stuff. Uh, the next slide's arts and crafts. We, I mean, the exposure to this is really cool because I think if you just walk in the center, sometimes you'd look around and you you would be tempted to make a guess at like who would maybe and who wouldn't be interested in arts and crafts. But I think the beauty is when you throw it out and lots of kids are doing it and your friends are doing it, even if it might not have been your thing, you kind of wander over and try it out, too. And it's just one of those things where they're getting exposure. They maybe would have never done something like this if they were sitting at home or or whatever, but they're just, you know, it's just there. And some kids really, this is what they want. This is their number one program. They thrive on it. They're good artistically. I'm jealous of those kids because that's never been me, uh, but they, you know what I mean, like they really thrive in this stuff. And then other kids, yeah, they're getting the exposure and they're they're finding, oh, this is kind of fun or it's kind of interesting. So it's, our programs are for everybody, no matter what level you're at. We try and we don't force anybody to do the structured program every day, but we do a lot of gentle nudging, you know, like, hey, we're doing this over here, let's come try this out, you know? Alright, next slide. Fresh Food Friday, yep, Cooking Club now we call it, um, so that we can do it on days other than Friday. We just rebranded it Cooking Club. Uh, but again, with lots of good activity there. We built our own little kitchen many, many years ago, uh, when we took over the, uh, this property, uh, from a group that had been, uh, renting it previously. We built that little kitchen. We got a nice donation of a Sub-Zero refrigerator. And then we've got this oven in there, so hopefully everything's up to code, uh, but we do some cooking and, uh, you have a nice little, uh, space there that we can utilize. Uh, quiet time, just on the right side of the the screen there. We we do, we have a little room that I didn't put in a picture here, but a little room that used to be part of the library and staff or whatever. Uh, up at the front of the building, we actually keep that designated specifically, uh, for quiet time. Uh, but just, you know, throughout the center, if kids just want to chill and read a book or EGADs, do homework. Um, there is space to do that and we do try and support that, you know, with with some quiet areas, so. Uh, next slide is field trips. Uh, we did go to Monona Pool this summer, took some kids up there. Uh, and then Spartan Bowl, that's pretty popular. We do that a couple of times a year, just walk down there and do some bowling after school. Uh, the next slide, we actually did a little fishing trip. Uh, some kids were really into fishing, so we, uh, walked over to, I'm not even sure where this photo is. Maybe some of you recognize where this is.
Babcock?
Oh, it probably is. That makes sense. Yeah, it's probably just right on Babcock there. Uh, doing some fishing, so, yeah, look at that. Glenn caught a fish. Awesome. Oh, and so did, um, oh, sorry, I can't remember his name, but awesome. Next slide, uh, was our presence at the Community Festival a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we had a booth, um, amongst all the people with booths, uh, where we just did snow cones and really just a a chance for us to be present for the community and we had brochures and just available to answer questions that parents might have or kids might have. Um, you know, no matter how much we advertise and and push out our brand, it it's still like, it's amazing how people really don't know what we're doing down there and what we've got going on. So we use opportunities like this to try and get the word out. And there's there's even a a segment of people who who don't understand that it's, uh, it's a free service. It's not like an alternative, like paid, you know, after-school care thing. It's it's actually like a free service, uh, to our youth members, so uh, we're trying, again, trying to get the word out there. Uh, we participate in the parade. Like always, kids did an awesome job this year rationing their candy so that we made it all the way through. That's always the battle, right? We start with big bags of candy and sometimes by the turn by the gazebo, it's like, oh, no more candy, but uh, they did a great job this year, just kind of making sure everybody in the parade had an opportunity for youth center candy. So that was fun. Great day, as you guys might remember, beautiful weather day, so.
It was.
Alright, let's get to the next slide about partnership. Uh, we mentioned this at the top. We've been around since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, and we we feel we're a partner with the community, right? We're providing these services. That's why we exist. We are not-for-profit company, McFarland Youth Center, Inc. Uh, we are here to make sure these valuable services get delivered to the kids that want them, that need them. Um, we've provided over twenty-five Um, we've provided over 25,000 hours of service. If you just do the math, three to six PM, you know, since 1998 on all the weekdays, that's what, about what it adds up to be, about 25,000 hours we've been open, providing that safe, you know, spot for middle school age kids to go. We've had thousands of unique attendees. We didn't have a great attendance system at the beginning. Uh, we still do it pretty manually, it's like, I can't, you know, get a real specific number on that, but we know it's in the thousands, you know, since 1998 of just different kids that have come through there. And, and some kids come every day or practically every day. Other kids, you know, they might come seasonally, like they're in football and they're doing that and then in the winter they're there and then in the spring they're doing something else. Um, other kids, you know, maybe they just come a couple of times and they don't come again. But that happens and that's fine, you know, everybody's got to find the right fit for themselves. Uh, but we, we do track unique attendance numbers throughout the year. And I would say in any given calendar year, we have between 25 and 30% of the middle school population. So all the kids that are in six, seven, eight, come to the youth center at least once in any given calendar year. Um, we've had over what I'll call 70,000 asset building hours. And I think that's a, an order of magnitude underestimate of what we've really had, but it's all the data I can kind of dig up going back to when we started tracking it. But if you would basically, again, take those 25,000 hours and have been open and if we're, if we're open any given day and five kids do a one-hour service activity, that's five asset building hours, right, and, and five service hours. So it's a multiplier of the activities we're doing and the number of kids we're exposing it to them. You know, how many basically kid hours are we getting in this research, you know, based instruction, right? That's why we're doing it. So it, again, why we're there and the hours we're open and the kids we're attracting, it just multiplies out exponentially to, uh, that asset building model of youth development. Uh, support, uh, certainly we've had tons of support from many different, uh, areas of our community, including, you know, 80 or 90 individual donors through our Friends program every year, some of which are sitting in this room, honestly, so thank you all very much. We've had, you know, great support from the Town of Dunn, from the village, but, but of course, we've also had great support from the school district. Uh, there was a time when I came on, when the youth center was close to not existing because it had been mismanaged by a third party, uh, financially and almost, almost went belly up like in, in the crib, you know, when the first few years of the youth center. And I know the school district at that time, right before I came on the board, had kind of swooped in and saved it. Uh, just from, not necessarily from a funding standpoint, but from an administrative and handling the books for a couple of years and kind of allowing the center to get back on its feet. And so we, we are forever grateful for that and I, I don't do a good job of mentioning that every year and reminding our audience at home that, you know, if it wasn't for those actions many years ago, Scott Brown, Jeff Mahoney and, and others, uh, the youth center just wouldn't have made it out of its first few years of existence. Uh, but since then, um, in other ways, uh, you know, since we became our own company and incorporated and became a nonprofit in about 2006, uh, we've of course continued to have great support, a great relationship, uh, with the school district. I know we've had, um, you know, school staff be on our board of directors, typically the middle school principal, it's Jandin graciously, even though he lives far away, graciously sat at our board meetings, second Tuesday of the month for many, many years as middle school president and offered sage advice and guidance for us. Um, we've had, uh, usually represented from the guidance staff at the middle school too, a counselor, a social worker, what have you, usually sits on our board as well. Cause we like, like everybody who deals with youth development, we have challenging situations, you know, that we, that come to our center and we have to figure out how to work through them and how to still try, just like you guys, right, try and reach the kid, try and make progress and stuff like that. So that type of guidance is especially helpful for us as well, you know, that we've had on our board, uh, throughout the years. Uh, financially, you know, the district, uh, through the Fund 80 levy supports the youth center as well. That's been a tremendous help for us the last few years. Um, you know, that type of funding support, uh, allows us again to get that staff we need in terms of their, uh, com- you know, competency level of what they can deliver as a staff and also just warm bodies to, like with increased attendance, you know, we used to be probably in the, excuse me, the teens for attendance and now again, when we're, when we're where we need to be and where we should be, we're 20 to 25, sometimes 25 to 30, we just need a ratio of staff that can sit there to, you know, one of the key words in our mission statement is safe, right? And if you get out of ratio between staff and students, it's not going to be safe, uh, in terms of the environment there, uh, and things like that. So just having that type of financial support does put the right people there and it puts enough of them there, uh, that we can, you know, keep servicing everybody who shows up. We don't want to turn anybody away, we don't want to put attendance limits on or, or anything like that. So again, on behalf of the, the entire youth center board, we are very grateful for the, the support we've had this year and, and over the years. Okay, our budget, I know it's a bit of an eye chart and this, this is more just, you know, for your packets and stuff. If you want to look it over, feel free, or if you want to drill me on questions, that's fine too. Uh, we haven't really gotten into it. Uh, we're, we're having our monthly youth center board meeting next week and we'll start to look at it and then we revise it in December and then we finalize it in our January board meeting. So we're a little off from where you guys are, the villages, so I, I just put the big preliminary stamp on this, tried to roll up some numbers the other day. Um, I, I don't see any huge increases, you know, if we would continue to operate the way we've been operating, although we'll talk about that on the next slide, um, that we don't see anything on either side of the ledger. Expenses on the right side, uh, revenue sources on the left, we don't see any major changes coming through. Now, uh, the next slide, uh, i- is really a slide about our long-term stability though.
I just have one question about the revenue, I can't remember from when I reviewed it before. Do you get suppo- financial support from each of the municipalities that are in the school district?
So right now, the,
I know it's some, but.
The Village of McFarland supports us and the Town of Dunn supports us. The other ones I list up there, but I, I put their actual numbers, which are zero.
Yep.
Uh, we took a crack at those five, six, seven years ago, tried to reach out, schedule meetings. There, there was not, I'll just say diplomatically, there was not anyone receptive to providing funding to McFarland Youth Center. Even though we know, you know, those municipalities are a part of this district, right? And so therefore, some of the kids who are going to the youth center are probably at some point, you know, touching these different municipalities as well. And I know Blooming Grove is or has dissolved or whatever, but you know, Town of Caddis Grove is still out there, City of Madison, and we know we have a large footprint in terms of population, right? That comes with this district now from secret places and, and what have you. So, um, it's not to say they couldn't be approached again, but when we did initially, there just was no appetite for it, so.
Did you get responses at all or?
Um, a couple of them at least talked to us on the phone, but it really didn't go any further than that. We were not able to get in front of any boards or anything like that, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, good questions, fair questions. Okay, so our last slide here, and, and I'm just going to speak frankly, uh, really for your guys' benefit to understand kind of this journey we've been on, but also anybody watching at home, any community members, that want to better understand our situation. So, uh, our current facility again is the former Village Library. NYC had hoped to relocate to a future McFarland Community Center. Uh, but that project is currently paused, uh, that's a municipal project through the Village of McFarland. They put that on hiatus in the summer of 2024. Uh, from an operational, uh, standpoint, we had, um, a loose plan, uh, s- that was started a few years ago, about transitioning both facility and operations to be under the village government. And the, the initial thought was it would make most sense to do that when the physical location changed. When the community center opened up, uh, and there was a space for youth services or youth center, whatever it would be called in the future, in that building, that would make sense to physically move the operation there. And at that time, have the village administer those services. And one of the reasons we had requested the village to do that is because our organization has become very large and complex for a group of volunteers to manage. Um, some of what I talked about previously tonight, you know, we started with a smaller space, 2,000 square feet. Now we have 4,000. We started with attendance levels in the low teens, now in our best years, we're 25 to 30 kids. Through, through generous, again, supporters such as yourselves, uh, we've increased the staffing, we've increased the payroll, we've increased the budget, but that is a lot to manage. Um, we do hire and contract for help where we can, like with accounting services and stuff, but there are, there is still a lot of management that's needed from our board, like administrative time to help our staff navigate those things, to help, you know, navigate payroll, monthly bills, navigate, um, audits and reports that are due to the state government and Dane County and things like that. Um, our own fundraising, we do internally, um, so board members take that on a lot of times, um, by themselves. You know, our, our staff, we really try and keep targeted on delivery of programming to kids, right? Uh, so our board, you know, and we've been happy to do it, but about five years ago, we started, you know, voicing that we were going to run into a problem with burnout, with exhaustion. Uh, we weren't finding replacements for board members that were attritioning out through retirement or moving out of the area. Some of our board members have been parents of kids that go and then as their kids age out, they, you know, kind of attrition off our board too and that's been the normal cycle. But again, you know, during COVID, things became difficult to find, as you might expect, people to step into those roles. And it's really continued since then, it's been, we just don't have the snappy Instagram posts, I don't know, but it's been hard to find people to help out. So the work required from our board of directors has stayed at a very high level and it's gotten more and more, uh, over the years. But there are fewer of us, so it's getting more concentrated and, and the issue's actually becoming a lot more acute. So in April of 2023, uh, the village board, um, in, you know, response to our requests, uh, put a resolution in place, uh, that talked about placing youth services in the master facility plan and then also had another part of the res- resolution that talked about transitioning the operations as well. When the community center part of that got paused, uh, the, some people at the village approached the youth center and asked if we would still like to go through with the operational transition, that they could work on that, that they could make that a goal to do that. And so we said, yes, we still have the same acute issues regardless of which facility we're going to be at. And since there's no end date in sight to resume, we, we said, the community service said, yes, we would still like to go forward with that. So last October, we put it in writing, uh, in a letter addressed to the village board that they suggested we write. And per their suggestion, we also put a proposed transition date. And we, we thought through that carefully. We thought, uh, we came to the, to the date of July 1st, 2026. Um, so you have to, this would be October of '24 that we sent this letter. We thought that's almost two years to figure out how to get this done and then to actually do it. And that felt like also about how long we could keep holding on as a board. Like we've already been holding on for four or five years, like just hold on a little longer, just hold on a little longer. Like we've been every ounce of effort we could just to hold on and make it this far. So that's the date we put in there and we also thought middle of the year actually made more sense for us, trying to do it in the middle of a school year, January 1st or something like that, just didn't really seem to make sense. So, um, that's the date we proposed in the letter. Uh, the village digested that letter and they, uh, reacted to it at a couple of their meetings late last year and then in January of '25. And they directed their staff to work on a transition plan. Unfortunately, we didn't make as much progress as we needed to. The goal was to have that plan, I, I'd say mostly fully vetted out. And then of course, like everything, you need a budget attached to it, right? People need to know the new way of doing things, where does that leave us against, you know, what we currently spend for youth center, what we need to spend in the future. Not necessarily that it had to be all the village, it could have been all the stakeholders trying to figure it out, but we needed a plan in place and our goal was to have it in place and released as the, uh, part of the base village budget that they put out in September. We did not make it, um, to that deadline. So in late September, um, as that base budget was being released, we held our first meeting with the working group of administrative staff from the village since May, our first in-person meeting. And at that time, the youth center was informed, uh, that the, the village no longer saw this as a good fit for them at this time. Obviously, that was very difficult news for us to process and take on. It seemed to be backing away from a commitment they had made generally and then started to work on specifically. Um, and the fact that we had been working towards that path means that we also hadn't been working on any other paths. Other paths would involve us trying to stay afloat, trying to come up with new board members, but that doesn't really make sense to work on that and ask people to come serve on the board that's going to dissolve because it's going to another entity, right? So we, we had been working on one path in good faith. So to hear that news at that time, at the end of this process was very difficult for us. We went, we, the youth center board and some of our parents and supporters, uh, went to the following village board meeting after that. Everyone utilized the public comments for 92 minutes of comments about why the youth center is important to them, what it's meant to them. Some of them are past, you know, attendees that are now doing great things in college and stuff like that. So everybody, you know, ga- gave their thoughts to the village board about why these services matter and really pressed the village board to continue to work on figuring out a way to make this work. Since that meeting, which occurred on October 16th, uh, we are now in the middle of the vigi- village budgeting season. They hold a number of meetings to review different areas of their budget. Uh, last, uh, week, they, they held a meeting where they go through possible alterations to their budget, one of which was proposed to alter it to include additional funds next year to help the youth center continue to exist in some way. So not a defined plan, not necessarily them taking over operations, maybe money for an administrative assistant, unknown, but just to put money aside that could be utilized to help the youth center continue because it, it frankly is in serious jeopardy of not continuing in the current format with the current resources we have on the board. That, that amendment will be voted on up or down this Thursday. And I might, I don't know if I'm using all the technical words here, amendment or what have you, but that, that proposal to put those extra funds in needs to be approved to be a part of the budget and that will be this Thursday at 7:00 PM. So this meeting's a little ahead of that, so I, I'm not here with an answer on how that's going to go and I don't want to be in the prediction game. Um, I think, you know, if you loo- if you were at or had a chance to watch the previous couple of meetings, there are, there are definitely some people who, on the village board, who, some trustees who seem in, in favor of this or something akin to it, and there are some who seem opposed. So I, I think it is well within the realm of possibilities that that amendment will not be approved and there will not be additional funds for the youth center, either to take over the operations or any other solution. You know, simply say that will put us in an existential threat of, you know, of jeopardy of not being able to continue the youth center throughout all of 2026. And that, that existential jeopardy again is not really, you know, on our budget sheet for the funding for what we do at the center, it's more of how to support that, right? Through a board, but a board that's really doing strategic board guidance, but also administrating. And I, I edited it up and, and made some month by month and duty by duty calculations. And roughly speaking, it looks like it's about 200 person hours of board strategic type duties a year and then another 200 hours of administrative help a year. And now that we seem to be going away from the transition plan, I guess our youth center board will have to understand if there can be another path and how we would explore that. And of course, the hard part is to find time to even explore that because we're already saying we're completely tapped out on resource time. Um, I do want to acknowledge, uh, that, that Megan heard about this and she called, uh, uh, or utilized an existing meeting that the village and the school board have together, right, every month or two. Uh, and a couple of people from the youth center, a couple of people from the school district and a couple of people from the village board utilized that meeting slot, uh, I think it was last week, although my brain's getting fried with all this. To, to at least get it out in the open, what's going on here and that, that we all acknowledge that it's an important service and it's in the community's best interest to figure out how it can continue. So I really appreciate that, Megan, that leadership of starting those conversations. We didn't have any silver bullets at that meeting. I, I mean, I, we know there are no easy to do silver bullets here. If they were, we all would have thought of them and just done them, right? So we will potentially need to regroup, um, next week. And I know Megan, you, you pinged me earlier about maybe looking for some time to do that. Again, with that, that broader working group, which I appreciate because I, I, I felt like we've been a little siloed in this whole process, you know, like it shouldn't just be the village's, you know, issue or what have you to figure out. It shouldn't be just the school districts. As a community, we should all be working together and it, and maybe that means bringing the Town of Dunn as well. You know, whatever's practical at this point, I'm all for, but I definitely am a believer in like, in like the collective nature between the different stakeholders here that we need to figure this out together. If something can be done, you know, what can be done and what can we do it on? And I think, you know, what our board is, again, gonna be faced with is a challenge of, if there's a different path, how do we even, like, put our arms around that path in a real way? You know, we can all, I think we all have some ideas, but to actually do some kind of feasibility work on those ideas and see how they could be turned into real actionable things, which would probably lead to requests, you know, for different funding or resource time or something that would make those workable to allow this service to continue if it's not gonna be directly absorbed by the Village. We're gonna need actually help, you know, just resource help figuring out the feasibility, right? So that's my sneak preview, I think, for, for some future meetings here that'll happen is, is how do we get help just investigating the options? None of us know, you know, I, I do this as a volunteer. I'm an engineer in my real job. I don't know the whole nonprofit world, right? I know the Youth Center and how to support it, and have been happy to do so, but I, I would need help researching that. I, I don't know if there's even anyone on our board that has, you know, the background or the, or the, again, the resource time to do that. So we're gonna need help just to figure out what our options are. So I, I'm sorry, it's not all good news tonight. It's been really good news and presentations for about 20 years as I've been doing these updates. And tonight, we still went through a lot of great things, but at, but at the end here, it's unfortunately pretty serious about our future, and I just thank you again for the support. I'm here to answer any questions or follow-up emails or phone calls or what have you. Just feel free to contact me in any way. Thank you.
Sean, I'm curious, what, what's the ratio of males and females who are attending?
Whew, that's a good question. We don't track it.
Okay.
So anecdotally, I, probably trends a little more female right now, just a few times I've stopped in this school year during operating hours. I suspect that's, it's pretty close, though. I, I suspect that, we also have an all-female staff right now.
Yeah.
And we've had times where we've had all-male staff.
Right.
And I know there's a little, it sways a little bit that way. I think that's just natural, you know, and it's not targeted in any way, and we're open to everybody. But yeah, I think over the years, it's, it's been really equally adapted.
That's cool.
Good question.
Well, thank you for your leadership over the years.
Yes.
You know, having been a board member, I've seen it in action, right? Both Sean and Penny, too.
Yeah.
Penny's been a real consistent force, but without them, there's no way the Youth Center would be where it is. All these directors, all the location, all the programming changes, the thing that's been consistent is, is that support and leadership, so.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's been an honor. I've been happy to do it. It's been great. I, I get the reward, too. You know, I see the kids there having fun, making friends, and then I see them sometimes later in life, working at the bank or friends with my kids as they grew up and to be older, and then, oh, so-and-so's at M A T C, and they're studying to be a vet tech, and I'm not gonna say the Youth Center takes all, you know, credit for their child development, but I think we're part of the story, you know? And there's a lot of kids that are looking for a place to go. There's a lot of kids that are looking for a different environment where they can thrive, where they can make some new friends and stuff like that, and we want to continue to be there for them for that, you know? We had parents say, you know, not every kid's in sports or able to play sports, they're just not interested or not good or whatever, and this is one of those alternatives, you know? And in high school, we have a lot of alternatives. It's really great, you know, what happens at the high school. There's, there's so many different after-school clubs and programs and stuff, and in middle school, there's just not as many available. So that's where I think we fit in as part of that, that puzzle in the youth, youth development.
And they need more supervision as a middle schooler.
Yes.
Participate in activities and otherwise, that's, that's why this was started, right?
Yeah, identified need, you know, it's, it's kind of an age, when I came in, it was explained to me, and this was again, like a countywide push, it was kind of an age that's kinda getting too old for daycare, after-school care, too young to be working jobs at McDonald's or something after school, or being on the high school football team or something. So it's kind of this awkward teenager age, and I think we've all been there at some point in our lives. I know I certainly was, you know? And how do you find your place? And this is giving them a find, you know, an opportunity to find their place, and constructive. I was also, when I came on, you know, I, I remember clearly at one of the first Village Board meetings, our old Village Chief Greg Leck, and he spoke very positively about these constructive outlets for youth, you know, and he wasn't saying youth are bad or, or things like that, but he said, if, if they don't have constructive things to do, they will find other things to do. Some of those will be fine choices, and some of those will be something less than fine choices.
Right.
And as the police chief, he really understood that, right? Like, we're gonna give our youth in this community positive outlets, or we're not, and we're gonna be dealing with something else, so.
For sure. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for all your, I mean, just echoing what Erin said.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, it's really, you don't see a lot of volunteers sticking around for 20-plus years.
No, that's amazing.
Yeah, and if anyone's out there listening at home, you know, honestly, like, if people are, you know, interested in helping out and trying to figure out where you can help your community, this is a tremendous opportunity, you know, serving on the Youth Center Board. Maybe, maybe someone's out there with, you know, really updated vision even of, of where the Youth Center could go from here. I, I think we're open to all possibilities at this point, so.
Yeah.
I know I mentored two students at the middle school the last couple of years, and both of them, it was, it was just one of the, really the, just kind of the thing that really they, they kind of centered their, the day around. It was just a really great experience for them.
Cool.
They needed that.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, we get to be in a unique role to kind of support you as we can and your successes over the years. And as someone who's new to the Board and also newer to McFarland, I really appreciate the history that you provided tonight. That's really valuable to me as a community member.
Thank you.
To understand the depth of your experience and your commitment. And it's also really fun for me to also see, like, the collaboration, that respectful collaboration, respectful collaboration that we have in our community. I think that's really key to finding new and unique ways to serve our kids. So thank you for your service for that.
Welcome, thank you.
Can I ask one last question that, and I hope this is not a dumb question, but what role now is the county? Have they, are they just pulling back?
Yeah, so Dane County, their budget's at the preliminary stage right now, but our, our funding basically looks level if it goes through with, so their base budget comes out, then their county executive kind of puts a pencil through some of the numbers. So that second number that came through was, was maybe a decrease of a few hundred dollars on a scale of like 16,000. So if it stays like that, that will be fine, you know? If something were to happen and that would get slashed drastically, then that will just create more deficiencies for us to try and address. But fingers crossed, hopefully that just kind of stays where it is.
And they're constantly writing for grants and receiving grants.
Yes.
Right.
Seeking as many funding sources as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other, oh, I know, I had one question. How do high school volunteers fit in? Do they?
Oh, that's a good question. We, we have a pretty limited array of high school volunteers, but we try and identify a couple kids that are leaving eighth grade each year that have really been, you know, a part of the Youth Center during their time in middle school. And we'll reach out, we'll ask them, hey, would you be interested in volunteering here? But we wanna make sure there's like a clear line, right? So we actually get them little shirts and lanyards that say volunteer, and we give them some duties, you know? We don't want them just kind of hanging out with the kids and still kind of just being there as an attendee as the ninth grader, right? So we, we give them some things to do. We try and only have usually one a day, maybe two a day. There was a time where we tried having four or five high school volunteers, and that, as you might imagine, was not the best choice by us. It didn't work. Became more work to manage them than, you know.
They are former middle schoolers.
Exactly, exactly. So we, we pulled back and we said, okay, this is still a good idea, but let's set it up in a way that'll be a little more successful. So yeah, we're totally open to it, and those kind of just ebb and flow every semester who's available and who's still interested and who is, you know, they have to actually usually apply, like, right, to say they wanna do it, so.
Okay.
Good question, yeah.
I have one question.
Sure.
For the, the grant writing that you do is that I'm assuming most of your work is volunteer. Do you have anyone specific who does that work to help you, or is that something you guys stumble upon or?
Yeah, we, that's a good question. I'd say it's a mix. We, we've identified a few grants every year that we try and go after that are pretty regular, like the Capital Times Kid Fund, Alliance Energy. Then there's, there's like a collective one through United Way called By Youth For Youth, and that one's really cool, because the kids write the grant proposal, and our, our staff director kind of guides them, you know, but they pick an idea. That's where that one service project I was talking about with the toiletry kits for people experiencing homelessness, that's where that one came from, was the By Youth For Youth program. Then we'll just hear about other ad hoc stuff and kind of work on it. We, we don't have like a super streamlined system for it. Usually, our staff director will write the applications, but we have one board member, Luanne Bowens, that tries to review them and kind of work with them as they're working on it. But we don't have like a designated grant person or something like that, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for having us. If needed, hopefully we'll come back and talk about paths forward at some point. We'd love that opportunity, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Is there anything else I need to stick around for tonight? Or I'll probably have to go home and play spouse and father and stuff like that, so.
Other duties.
Go put on your other hats.
Thanks for having us. Really appreciate it, yeah.
Yep.
All right, have a good night.
You, too. All right. That's always a fun update. Okay, so next up, we have our Forward Exam data and the annual reading report and ACT 20 update from Emily Kinsler.
Hi, everybody.
Her first appearance with us.
That's great.
Woo, woo. Well done.
Thank you very much. I've got a few documents to pass out.
Oh, we love handouts.
We have folders.
Just don't trip on the cords.
Thank you.
So you'll, I know that this was shared ahead, but the, the longer report is quite extensive, so I've just sort of pulled some highlights that are gonna be on the slides that I, that I will speak from. Do those go on the, those go on the TV?
Yes.
I can put them up there.
Sounds great.
I think I have them, right? Or do you have them?
I have them.
Okay.
I know you have them.
I know I do. Sometimes I do.
Thank you.
Sometimes Angie has them.
Just from a visual standpoint, this is always one of my favorite reports, because it's always like a little rainbow.
It's got the rainbow chart.
Doesn't take much to make me, bring me a little joy.
Color coding is really nice.
It is. Hi, everyone else.
Hello.
I just gave them a look.
I know, they just.
Alrighty, so this is our Forward Exam ACT data, ACT 20, State of the State, and academic data reports sort of all rolled into one. Lots of good things to celebrate in here, and always, you know, we're still looking to improve and find those areas where maybe we're not living up to where we wanna be to meet the needs of every learner every day. The highlights here, really awesome that our students outperformed the state average in all grades and all content areas. So that's right off the bat, that's super positive for us. And in ELA, we are making gains. All students performed better than they did last year in grades three through eight on the Forward Exam. So our percent improved in student achievement data from last year. Math was a little bit all over the place in terms of some grades made some gains, some grades slipped a little. There wasn't any like big trend in movement one direction or the other. And in science, can't really compare across cohorts, because fourth and eighth grade are the only grades that are tested for science. But we ranked sixth in the county and eighth, or, and sorry, and second in the county for eighth grade, for fourth and eighth grade respectively, and there's about 18 or 19 schools in the county, so still well above, above average there. And then a real highlight was our social studies testing for fourth, eighth, and 10th grade. We ranked first in the county for all three, so that's really awesome.
Yeah. I saw them bragging about that online. Duly, like, should be bragging about.
That's right. That's definitely a highlight.
Yeah.
We're gonna start out with our Forward Exam data for ELA, and I'll just kind of briefly explain how to read this chart for anyone who's not familiar with the rainbow chart or if you want a review from last year. So we're looking at the year-over-year by grade as well as by cohort. So if you look at like the third grade in that top-left quadrant for spring 2017, third grade, that's in blue, if you follow that blue diagonally down, that's that same group of kids as they're tested, as they matriculate through the grades. But we can also look at sort of as a school district, how are we doing with the new batch of kids that come into that same grade, and that's the row sort of moving across the top. And the percent that you'll see first is the percent when we add meeting at advanced in the ELA performance categories. When we add those two together, that's our percentile, or that's our percent, and then in the parentheses is how much we are above the state average. And again, we performed better than the state average in all subjects' grades. So you'll see that all of those are positive numbers. We don't have any negative numbers in there, which is great. So that's, that's, I guess, sort of like a summary of how to read, and again, this is our Forward ELA, where we're making improvements in all, in all grade levels. As we move to Forward Exam ELA rank in Dane County, we have a little variability here. Again, we're all towards the top half, with the exception of that seventh grade, which ranked 10th in the county, but eighth, eighth, third, sixth, 10th, and fourth. Again, no, no super obvious trend there in terms of like, you know, one half of the grade bands doing way better than the others. I'll speak a little bit later in the report about some things we're targeting specifically in ELA to like help ensure that our performance is where we want it to be.
This is the part where Erin always likes to note that a small change, right, can impact the rank, right?
Yes, thank you. Yes, your ranking is, a lot of them, they'll kind of get bunched up a little bit.
Right.
So a couple kids can put you over.
Right.
Yes, that's very true.
Yep.
Looking at our ACT results for ELA, we'll notice that the pre-ACT in ninth grade, 67.2% proficient, in 10th grade, 60%, and then in 11th grade, 56.3%. So we're having some ongoing conversations about sort of like, how are we making sure that kids are still throughout their time in high school, having access to complex texts and receiving the skills instruction that they need to be able to tackle those? My fabulous reading coordinators who helped put this together went to a wonderful conference recently and were sharing some research about, it's really the complex text specifically that differentiate the ACT from the pre-ACT, and when we start to see students trickle off, it's like making sure that we're instructing around those pieces in our classrooms. So that was really a great conversation to have with them.
Because it's the, in ninth and 10th grade is the pre-ACT, and then 11th grade is the ACT, right? Okay.
As we think about our literacy focus by buildings, so we've got some professional learning for teachers that's happening across all buildings this year, which I'm super excited about. So at all levels, in all grades, we've got folks receiving instruction and sort of applying the skills around explicit instruction, so making sure kids know exactly what they're being asked to learn, making sure that they have lots of opportunities to practice that, get feedback on it. And that impacts both, both our lesson design, so how we sort of set up our instruction as well as our delivery, and making sure that kids have opportunities during that instruction to not just be passive recipients, right, but to be interactive and engaged and responding to things so that they can get that in-the-moment feedback that helps them know if they're on the right track. At McFarland Primary School, we've got a Wonders Mid-Cycle Review that sort of is getting launched, so that's a check-in on that high-quality instructional material of wonders. That's our Tier One curriculum, and we're sort of checking in with teachers, how's it going? How are students receiving that instruction? Are there areas that you feel like you need additional support in, or ways that we can, as Department of Teaching and Learning and Building Admin, make that reading instruction as good as it can possibly be? We are refining our ACT 20 processes. Fortunately, like coming into this job in July and walking in, just you don't know what sort of systems are in place for things. And I was just blown away by the organization and attention to detail that was already here around ACT 20. And so with some minor, you know, refinement this year, I feel like we're in a really, really good spot with that. Staff trained in the science of reading and sort of expanding that training. So like our English Language Arts Curriculum Council, which is K through twelve grade teachers, are meeting and sort of sharing some of that knowledge across grade bands of like, what does it look like at the secondary level? When you have a kid struggling with decoding, like what are the things that still are part of your instruction there? Or how do we teach vocabulary all the way up through our system in a way that, you know, supports kids really building that background and knowledge base? So lots of cool work happening around that. At WABISA, we are continuing to apply our letters training. They have increased their time for the N E five phonics core. Teachers are sharing with me that that's like their favorite part of the day because the students are, it's got routines and procedures. And it's like the kids know what to expect. It's very explicit. And so they're really finding a lot of success with that and the students are as well. At Indian Mound, increased and continued focus on grammar instruction through the IXL curriculum. And continued work with disciplinary literacy at both middle and high school, which is super important. Because when we think about, if we really want kids to be readers, writers, speakers, listeners, we want that across all their subjects. And if you want to build vocabulary, like you can do some of that in your English class. But then you also want to do that in history and in science and in math and really all across the board. So supporting that work because really at secondary, it's about building that background knowledge and knowledge base and vocabulary. And that needs to happen across all subjects. So that's a little update on what's going on in our buildings and across the district. This piece I just wanted to explain the color coding. In terms of ACT 20 implementation, there are some things that are sort of like needed to happen one time to get it launched. And those things I've tried to sort of highlight in green, those are like, okay, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, we had to do these things. Or we had to train all of our staff at those grade levels in science of reading, we did the letters training. Then there's other processes that are really year, like every year we're going to need to do them and they're in progress because many of them happen multiple times a year. So in yellow, like you'll notice here, we're going to, you know, use these core curriculums. And that's going to be ongoing screeners and diagnostics and intervention cycles. And it's very, very nicely organized and very like the process is super clear and it's teams of teachers and interventionists talking together. And doing what's best for kids and making sure that it's really timely and that we're complying with all the components of ACT 20. So feeling really good about that and that's in the addendum, number one. And then number two is, I believe this is sort of a new piece of this, maybe for this group, maybe, I don't know. Okay, great. It's new to, it's new to me too. It's my first time. But I liked the idea of us sort of having a self-evaluation of where we're at with our literacy programming. And that can help us identify some areas where we might want to focus. On here, you'll notice everything from this top box that's on here is in place with the exception of someone in place for multi-level system of supports throughout our whole system. And we're working at the high school around what that can look like that's going to be effective. Because for kids who have been in our system throughout the years, they may have already received like targeted reading support previously. They might need something a little bit different in high school in terms of like, maybe it's more about the background knowledge and vocabulary support than it is about decoding. So it's just thinking through what makes the most sense at secondary and particularly at the high school in terms of supporting our students who are, when we do a screener or when we just look at previous assessments, when we notice that kids might have some lagging skills. The high school also piloted a screener in ELA this year, which I think Brett's going to talk more about during his time. All right, so for successes and next steps, really awesome to see that when we gave that ACT 20 required AMAS Web Plus screener, you'll notice here on the left, we had five point four five percent of kindergarteners, five point seven six percent of first graders, slightly higher in second and then down again in third, a percentage of students who received a personal reading plan. So those are pretty small numbers of kiddos and it allows us to provide some really intentional targeted support. I was so proud though that the bigger conversation at MPS in particular and into WIS was like, but we know that kids' skills haven't changed. So even if they're not receiving a formal personal reading plan, we want to make sure that if kids have any lagging skills, like they're addressed and that we keep our systems in place to support the kids, even if they fell above the twenty-fifth percentile. So that was really positive and sort of an all hands on deck, everyone just working to support our early readers.
That was going to be one of my questions about what, you know, what do we do for the kids who are at like the twenty-sixth percent level, so.
And so that can look like an intervention supported by an interventionist. And sometimes it looks like a classroom-supported intervention. But we're still monitoring progress and sending, you know, information home to families and just, and trying to be really thoughtful about. That's the purpose of the diagnostic piece is like, well, what is the, what's the actual skill you're struggling with? Because not all interventions will target that particular skill. So having like a range of options that we can use and being thoughtful about matching that with the particular skill deficit a kiddo might have.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Next steps for growth. So we are still looking for places in our curriculums where teaching may not be as explicit as we know that it could or should be. It's awesome to hear teachers talking about what they've learned through their science of reading training and saying, we really want to make sure we're living out, you know, if, when you know better, you do better. And as people have learned new things in the past five years, like wanting to make sure that that's being played out in our instruction. So continuing to have those conversations about where could we be more intentional? I mentioned the mid-cycle review for wonders. And then, yeah, continue to learn about the science of reading into secondary as well. All right, and then I'll just touch briefly on our other subjects. So in math, really strong academic data for grades three through eight on the forward exam. Again, I mentioned not all of them like increased over last year, but they're already at pretty high proficiency levels and particularly when compared to the state.
So my, one question there, just to clarify, because I, I think I know the answer. But so like for twenty-four and twenty-five, we see really big jumps in the percentage. And is that due to the different, when they recalibrated the?
Yes, so the cut scores for student assessment changed after twenty twenty-three. So like when we're making comparisons to past years, it's really like this year's and last year's data are comparable and everything before that is not.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Can you explain that a little bit more for people at home that may not understand exactly what that means?
Sure thing. So groups, it's sort of a renorming and redrawing of where cutoff categories are going to land. So when we're adding the meeting and advanced, groups of educators and stakeholders from around the state like meet, talk through what, what does advanced look like, what does meeting really look like and sort of pick a benchmark or sort of a cutoff. And those things get renormed every so often.
Thank you for explaining.
Yeah, of course.
You explained that very well on our like, our education night and like K through two, and so I just wanted to make sure that.
It is, it's a little technical.
It's different.
It's a little technical.
My sources at DPI would be proud.
What you can continue to compare is the relationship to the state because all the state has.
Right, that's true. Yeah, and we, and it, so it seems like, it looks like we really jumped, but it, it's just the definitions that changed.
Right.
And so.
So what counts as meeting shifted a little bit.
Right, our kids have really been performing well the whole time. It's really what we should take away from that.
I mean, honestly, and continue to be, right?
Right, yeah.
But it's always when you look at data, it's always like, what do we want to keep doing and what do we want to shift our practice around? And so it's finding those places where we can, you know, find ways to take action. Forward exam math rank in Ding County. So that bottom row is our most recent, so third, seventh, first, eighth, tenth and second. So it's in that little blip at the beginning of middle school. And then they come back, come back strong by eight, so we hope that trend continues. And ACT in math, we sort of see that same, like very impressive performance frankly, ninth grade spring eighty point one percent on the pre ACT seventy point seven. And then there is a pretty significant drop there to our eleventh grade math. And Brett and I and others have been having conversations around what might be going on. We looked at historial, historical data, dug into things a little bit more. And some of our current thinking is maybe as standards-based grading was in effect, like some of our curriculum may have been unspiralled a little bit. Which just, so spiraled curriculum means like we might teach this and then we're going to circle back and hit on something we learned earlier. And then we'll move out again and come back to something we learned previously. Sometimes scooping up kids who didn't get it the first time or reviewing for kids who did get it, but may have forgotten it. So just thinking about ways that we can intentionally build in some of that spiraling back. Whether it's just like retouching on previously learned concepts through a warm-up or, you know, other ways. So we're going to work with the math team around that, but, because we have fabulous teachers and we know, you know, everyone's, everyone's working hard. So just what can we shift in our practice to, to hopefully get some of that retrieval practice from previously learned concepts?
Well, and that, and that is kind of a trend year over year, even though we can't really compare, but like that, how it drops off in the later grades.
We talked about all sorts of things. ACT is a hard test.
That's what I was going to say.
It is, it's the time pressure, but so is the P, pre ACT, right? So it is a faster pace expected on the ACT, like a little faster, is that, you know? So just asking those thoughtful questions and hearing from people who are experts on those things.
Do you think it might have anything to do with the fact that colleges are no longer needing ACT scores for admission? And so there might not be that same amount of dedication that goes into preparing for the ACT?
That is, that's a great question. We did see some disparities between ELA and math. So when we, so I actually hadn't considered that exact thing. That's a, that's a.
I just like to think outside the box sometimes and like.
But motivation certainly is a factor, right? Like there's where people intentionally training for this, you know, big high stakes assessment, the way that maybe they did previously when it was like.
Cause I know, like I have high school and now a kid in college and we would talk about the ACT and they would, they, I'd hear comments from like their friends and whatnot saying like, oh, you know, I can get into college without it and that sort of thing. I was like, when I went to college, like your ACT was everything, you know, like I took that puppy twice. So I was just curious if that had been taken into consideration at all.
No, that's a great question. Yeah, thank you.
The one thing I think that you can look at, if you look at the comparisons to the state average would be, they would have the same.
Factors.
Same factors affecting them. So you would anticipate that if that was a primary reason for the drop, that a relationship to the state would be consistent.
Okay. Okay, cool. All right, and then we've got science where just again, performing really well. And by eighth grade, twenty-four point one percent above the state average is awesome. And then those rankings I shared, which is the fourth graders placed sixth and the eighth graders were second in the county.
And you can see, I think it's fun to look at eighth grade over time.
Yeah, right? One, one, two, one, two.
Stuff happening.
Yep.
And then, gotta save the best for last, which is our social studies data.
Of course.
So again, really strong showings for fourth, eighth and tenth graders, well above state averages, first in all three. I asked all of the principals, I was like, what, like what is so great about our social studies instruction? Like what are we doing right that we can do more of? And they all had very thoughtful answers, of course. Everything from like hands-on, experiential, simulation-y sort of learning that's super engaging for students and maybe different than sometimes what they're getting in other places. Depth over breadth, so just being able to, instead of thinking about covering content, right? Like how could we focus on those skills and go deeper? And just that hands-on piece, so anyway, it was a fun season of data, data collection and analysis. And the conversations are, are ongoing. And I lo, I love a research dive too. So sometimes, you know, these thorny questions like, why is that going on? And then we'll just spend hours thinking that through. Any questions you have or? Welcome to the district.
The, the, this is a random question and not from anything you presented, but it was in the big thing. The optional professional development for the fourth through twelfth grade teachers? Do you know how many people, like what percentage took advantage of that? You know, the Cox PD special, I could look up the actual name. It was, it's in there.
Was that the, like the literacy PD?
I think so, yes.
Science or reading.
Yes.
I do not know because it was before my time and I think.
Oh, right.
I'm so sorry.
I did not expect you to necessarily know. I was just curious because it is relatively new, like, and when it's optional, how much teachers, you know, what are teachers taking advantage of?
Well, I don't know that. I will say like the buy-in from teachers that like, that's a valuable knowledge base and people wanting to extend their understanding is really like across the board high.
Okay, cool. Thanks. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Your presentation was great, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having me, of course.
Yeah.
One quick question, and I totally apologize, I would have asked this before today's meeting, but my email too was in my draft box. That never happens to anybody.
Never, never.
Is, you could, I think correctly shared with us that the, some of the standardized test results do show some pretty large racial disparities. And as we look through this data and kind of part and parcel it out and have our building administrators look through that and kind of collaborate across the buildings, just wanting to make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront. Especially in these times, if you will, want to make sure that we're really meeting all of those needs. And if there's something we need to do more specifically to address that, that we're paying attention to that.
Yeah, and thank you for calling that out. Like these are composites, right, of all of our students and so they're not disaggregated by race, disability status, socioeconomic status. The student achievement data is available on Y public disaggregated in those ways, although their platform was down today. I was going to send it to you, but it wasn't working. And it will be in our public release report cards, November eleventh. We'll have some more specific demographically segregated data. And that's actually a perfect lead in because I think as principals set their building goals, like that's something that we're paying attention to and focusing on for improvement.
Yeah, we'll, we'll touch on that with the, the key performance indicators for the school improvement plan. So in that handout, it's on the backside for English and Language Arts specifically.
Cause that's, because it even, it can change within those subcategories per building. And so the needs can be really different that way too, so.
You just have to be careful because some of the, the cell sizes are very small population, you know. But anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Excellent, now we'll bring our principals up. Patiently waiting, way past their bedtime.
That's true.
Do you have your emotional support drinks like we did?
Yeah, we have all the, all the drinks here.
Make sure when it's your turn, you, you pass that mic around so we can hear you.
Yes, Owalla is not the best.
I had no clue I'm the odd duck with that.
Well, it's all the same water bottles that they have.
I'm obsessed with mine.
That's hilarious.
Okay, so it has this beautiful mouth. It has a built-in straw and you can tip it back. And mine has a handle.
So we're going to get started. So we're, talk about the, the format. And so the annual school improvement plan presentation. So you have a couple of things. I'll be showing some slides and the slides are just meant to. So you have a couple of things. I'll be showing some slides and the slides are just meant to give you a visual to remind yourself why we're here, um about our kids and our staff. But you also have a handout that I provided to you in advance and also um you have with you. It says school improvement plans on it. Yeah, it wasn't in a folder.
Okay, sorry.
My folder was nice.
And you'll see on the front, it has some acronyms because we use acronyms. So that's helpful for you. On the backside, you'll see the key performance indicators that are tied to our strategic plan. So we'll talk about those. And then you have each building's specific um school improvement plan. The aligned district-wide work on each of them is the same. Because it's aligned. So um just to orient you to that. So we're really focusing on our school improvement plan, obviously is focused on our mission of meeting the needs of every learner. Every day uh in pursuit of our vision of creating an equitable and inclusive community committed to student belonging, achievement and growth. So that is the focus of our work. And so our school improvement plan is not something we put on a shelf. It's something that you're gonna hear throughout our time today. And we'll be dividing up our presentation into the pillars. So we'll we'll take one pillar at a time. I'll provide an overview, then each building will have a chance to share a little bit about it. One of the things I'm going to say is that we don't want to waste your time repeating the same information each of the four of them. So if you hear something in one building, you can assume that some version of that's occurring in another building. They're just not saying that. Um so to honor your time. They may highlight a few things that are unique to their level and we'll start with different people every time. So you get to have the first person be be a different um person. Please save your questions for the end of that pillar so that you can get through all of all of the buildings. Um because they'll they'll get to share. So with that being said, we're gonna get started. With educational excellence, educational excellence. So our objective here is to improve academic achievement with a focus on literacy and closing gaps for traditionally underserved groups. This is from our school improvement plan. This was not designed, developed by an administrative team. It was developed by a group of community members and school staff and approved by you.
Do you mean the strategic plan?
In our strategic plan.
Okay.
It's right there.
Yep.
That's where that is from. And so um with that, uh our typically our uh school learning objectives are focused on this area because it's a primary area for the district. When you look at the KPIs, the key performance indicators, you'll notice that the focus is on, yes, overall proficiency. Um which, you know, increased um slightly uh last year uh between last year and the year before. But you're seeing what you're seeing is that we are not decreasing the gap. In fact, we're increasing the gap between students of color and non-students of color. Not small increase, but still an increase in something we're trying to shrink. Um you also saw that with students with and without disabilities. You can see that's our largest gap um from my, I'm not looking at forty one percent, my memory. Do I win the prize? Yeah, so a significant gap between students with and without disabilities. Um and students who are identified as being socio-economic um socio-economically disadvantaged, which is if they qualify for free and reduced meals, uh you can see that gap is also quite large at thirty one percent and a slight increase. All of these are slight increase um from last year. Um and then you also see that um continuing continuing to see that gap between our females and males with our females outperforming our male students as well. In addition to our academic data in this category, we also look at the connection index on the the school survey. That's the students saying that they belong to school because they have healthy relationships with other students. And you saw an increase there, but on a five-point scale, it's a four point four four. So that's really, really, really high. Um and and definitely a strength there. In terms of our aligned district district work, um we are really focusing on high-quality instruction and services. And that is for all students, our universal curriculum that all students receive, a comprehensive, equitable, multi-level systems of support. So uh our focus for this year in our professional development is really lesson design and we're doing that through. You heard explicit 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 was um not only my first heavy metal band name, it was also um part of our presentation because we're focusing on being very intentional in our language. Sorry, didn't mean to say that. Um but it came out. And so the other thing about that is we're also doing the designing for diversity, which you've heard about. Um that's Dr. Dr. Shelley Moore's work with a cohort of of staff um that are working on designing their lessons to meet the needs along of all learners. So that's really our focus. You heard about the literacy things. I'm not gonna repeat them. Another thing we're gonna highlight is these um collaborative classroom visits where teachers are observing other teachers, picking up the best practices that they can from them in these areas. And um also that we're continuing, I wanna emphasize, we're continuing to implement our um behavior response plan, our progressive behavior response plan as well as bullying, harassment, prevention and intervention and attendance procedures. So those were our focus more a couple of years ago, continuing to revise those. Okay, now it's my pleasure to introduce your
Can I interrupt you for a second? Can you just clarify? So on when we're looking at the metrics?
Yes.
Let's look at the one with the disabilities comparing students with and without disabilities.
Yep.
So twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, was that forty one percent that you got the gold star for, remembering?
That's the gap, yep. Between.
Yeah.
So that means that students without disabilities, there was a forty, they've performed forty one pers- percentage points higher than students without in terms of the the percentage who are identified as proficient and at advanced. You wanna get that as close as small. You want that forty one to be zero.
So it's not really a gold star.
Totally read that wrong.
It's gold star that I remembered.
Yes, it is a gold star you remember, yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Totally read that wrong.
Yep.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, I'm now get to turn it over to your primary principal, our primary principal, Mr. Greg Nelson.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Greg Nelson, principal at McFarland Primary School. So at MPS with our K through two students under the educational excellence pillar, I it was really exciting for me to hear the conversation right before um the principals came up about the fact that, you know, we have so many students scoring so well, but let's not lose sight of the students that might not be scoring so well if they weren't getting that level of support that they were getting. So specific to that, we have a really healthy system in place. We have a wonderful especially ELA curriculum um that Emily spoke about earlier, um mid-cycle with wonders. But when our teachers are using universal assessment data and classroom data, um formative data even from day-to-day classroom experiences, we are now going to be very intentional when they are working in their planning and collaborative teams to not only look at student data, identify student needs, but really put into um affect that mindset of work smarter, not harder, or plan smarter, not harder. They're going to co-plan and then figure out how they can co-serv students when appropriate. So that might mean, you know, two students from my class are joining Cory's class. One of his students is joining mine. Everyone going to Jamie's class. And that's so that teachers can really work on meeting those various needs, which you just can't do if you're working all by yourself in your classroom with your door closed. So during our Spartan time, which is the intervention time at the school, that's when teachers are gonna be looking to use that time for the kids in their classroom, for the kids in the classroom next door. And really thinking these are our kids. Let's plan together to meet the needs of all of our kids. So small group instruction and planning behind the scenes for it is one of our big focus areas this year under that pillar.
Cory Shevchak, principal at Willbees Intermediate School, also known as WIS. Uh so two um key areas for us. One being that if we think about our universal uh curriculum instruction, that's our tier one. Our our shift this year is really kind of thinking about tier two and um and that would be kind of what was discussed earlier a little bit about what are we doing for students who maybe have some gaps and specifically both not just academically but um social, emotional, learning-wise too. So really this kind of our focus is around tier two academic and um we'll say behavioral and social, emotional and having systems in place uh for teachers to um not only get the data, but then having the time um and the space to collaborate around that is super key. Um so they can do similar things to like what Greg is talking about, sharing students, sharing ideas. Um second thing would be around that PBRP, the uh positive behavior systems. And um specifically identifying um what we call it within that system, level one behaviors. Um those are already outlined for us, but then um what we just did was um took a look um from our our staff and our data, our current data, our behavioral data. Hey, what are you seeing in the classroom? What are we seeing in the data? And at a recent uh professional development day, taking those top five behaviors and breaking out into teams and really collaborating and talking about, all right, what are some strategies that we can? Oftentimes, we can get caught into reactionary um reacting to behaviors, but um so that so we're really challenging each other on uh how can we proactively um prevent some of those things. Um I did fail to mention too in that first part. And this kind of gets into what was discussed a little bit ago about the gaps that we were seeing. Um so we shifted now this year from having a gap closing um as a school school learning objective that was around students with disabilities and without because that was our largest gap. And we're gonna um you'll hear from Jamie too, a growth uh goal, which is really looking at every student. And and not just the gap and then using those systems that I talked about to really talk about moving every kid forward in their learning.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jamie and I am the principal at Indian Mound. Um you can see the picture up there of our web leaders. Where everyone belongs is the acronym for that. Welcoming our sixth graders is super fun. We had our sixth graders um by themselves at the school for the first day uh without everybody else, except for those eighth graders were there to help them out. So for Indian Mound, a lot of the same things that are happening in the other schools, so I won't repeat all of it, that's for sure. But I will say um all of us are doing this as well as the um collaborative classroom visits. We touched on that briefly. Um but we are focusing on the explicit instruction work with our staff, specifically focused this year on eliciting student responses. So we're really working on how are we engaging the learners in our classroom? How um there's different strategies and different techniques where we can make sure that every student is engaged and participating rather than the traditional just raise your hand and I'm gonna call on you. So there's lots of fun ways that we're we're learning and practicing those. And we're gonna be in each other's classrooms looking for some of those specific strategies um in our collaborative classroom visits. Another piece um similar to what Cory said is is really that student growth is a huge focus for us. Our our school learning objective this year for Indian Mound, instead of kind of looking at the proficiency and trying to increase proficiency, we're digging into the student growth and we want to see um more of our students meet their growth goal when they're taking their fast bridge. Um rather than, you know, there's gonna be some students who maybe are lower at the, you know, tenth percentile. And for those students to meet a growth goal, maybe their growth goal is getting to the twentieth percentile. Well, that still isn't necessarily meeting the proficiency or the grade level, but they're making big growth. And so we want to make sure, especially our students where there are large gaps, maybe our students of color, in some cases, or students with IEPs are um actually making bigger growth than our students who do not, which will also help to decrease our gaps. And then finally, looking at our universal expectations, we're always doing this at the middle school. Every year, we have to reteach and teach and reteach and refine um the learning around how we do business. We call it ANEVA. How do we do business here? And um it is always um every day. I think they forget and we teach them and we practice. We are really looking at um our time, which is advi- is our advisory. And so we have social, emotional curriculum that we present during that time. And additionally, we um for our student services team, we are really honing in on looking at our data, not only for our interventions for academic side, but also for our attendance, behavior referrals, tardies. We have something called Spartan calls when somebody uh when we need a student needs a break or just needs some time out of the classroom. So we're looking at that and being super intentional about thresholds for how many of those things um would then correlate to a specific intervention. So we can track it. We can see how students are doing. Um and that goes into that tier two work, which is what Cory was talking about as well.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Brett Jacobson, high school principal. Um at the high school, something uh new that we've got going on this year that we are trying, we're actually piloting this is an English universal screener. For anyone that knows about universal screeners, there are multiple to choose from. In the K eight world, a nine twelve universal screener is uh not really something that exists. So but there are companies that are trying to come up with something because they could potentially be beneficial. So we're giving one a shot this year. Um you know, Emily talked a little bit about that tier two uh intervention and we're hoping that this might help us be able to properly identify students and their exact needs for a sort of tier two intervention uh that we use during our homeroom and advisory time, which is my second bullet point there. We restructured our homeroom and advisory rostering this year to be able to support some academic support and intervention maybe better. We think better than we've had it in the past. Um the way that we did that was hopefully to free up or not hopefully, we have freed up some staff for um more intervention time, um for them to be able to pull students is what we call it, is they can um kind of request students to meet with them during this time and then they can work on a skill that was missed or uh reassessment or perchance or, you know, re- um reassessing is oftentimes what is that what that time is used for. Now, we also continue uh to work on our ACT test prep and how we're infusing that into our courses to make sure that we're familiarizing students with the test and question structure. I know that Emily also touched on that when she was up here, just the uniqueness of that ACT test um is is something that students haven't really had exposure to oftentimes before they get there. So making sure that we're infusing that a little bit along the way to make sure that the first time that they see questions that are structured in that sort of way isn't when they get there in this kind of quote-unquote high-stakes test, although kind of as Megan alluded to earlier, that the high-stakesness of that um is has been going away a little bit. Um you know, the trend for some more competitive schools is heading back towards relying relying on that some, but um you know, that'll probably ebb and flow over the years would be my guess. So those are a few of the things from the the high school. And now turn it over to you guys for any questions you might have.
You guys are really thorough. Thank you.
Yes.
I think if anything, just feedback that I think the idea is about doing more collaborative planning um is really important. I think we kind of saw that in our conversation about the youth center earlier that we are are better together. Um and I think that that's really important. And I I'm in- impressed that we're using each other to make each other better. So um I didn't have any other specific questions, just feedback.
Yeah, like that whole thing that just kept going through my head was it takes a village, you know, and just seeing teachers working together and seeing their strengths and weaknesses and, you know, how they can each help each other be better, I think is awesome. So great work.
Yeah, proactive part of it, like just thinking about it before it happens, like teaching my second grader that now, like let's plan for something before it happens. And so it's has a lot of utility, so.
Thanks. I'll pass it back to Cory's kicking us off or Aaron's probably kicking us off for family and community.
Yeah, so moving on to family and community engagement, where our objective is to bridge meaningful and constructive communication and partnerships to ensure equitable access, representation and voice. In terms of the measurement tools that we use, this is really focused on our school perception survey. And we look at the informed index and included index of that parent guardian satisfactor satisfaction survey. The informed index is about parents feeling that they're being kept up to date on their child's progress and what's happening at school. And then the included index is them feeling welcomed, respected and part of the school community. And you can see on both of those, they um both had a slight increase but were over four on a five-point scale. So continuing to show really So continuing to show really strong results there and growth over time as a result of the many efforts. In terms of what is happening at a district-wide level is really looking about making sure that our information systems and our communication align with our stakeholders, our audience, so our families and our communities. We're feeling like we're having quite a bit of success with our communication strategies with our families, so focusing on the community. That happens more at a district level than at a building level. Things like the community newsletter just went out today, things like the board members being present in the community, newspaper articles, those kind of things. But it's about aligning those tools. From a parent perspective, we have a lot of communication tools. So the principals have been focusing on making sure they understand how to use those tools, where the seesaw or canvas or whatever the case may be with our website and things. We also are focusing on connecting our volunteers with our volunteer opportunities. One of the things we're looking, moving forward, is to focus on how can we get community members aware, if they're interested in volunteering, with specific activities that, where that could be beneficial, but not creating activities just to have volunteers. So, because that's not effective. And then continuing to provide opportunities for families to give feedback to us on specific topics that we want to learn more about, whether it's how we do conferences, or what it's like to be a new, new family member. So turn it over to Cory, who's gonna get us started.
Excellent. All right, so just a couple of things that really, in the last, really, I think, two to three years out of this pillar, that have really driven some of our engagement. You can see here is the, our Family Fun Night that we had recently, last week, and 700, I think it was like almost 800 people showed up for that.
Seven hundred and forty-four.
Seven forty-four. And, and then also the K five Learning Night that we had earlier this fall, that we got, that started last year, had that second half of the year and shifting that, really, I think speaks to, to this pillar and some of the ways that we've supported that. And that kind of gets into this, the first point I want to make around us using the feedback, because we did, we used the feedback from, from families to create those opportunities. And at the K five Learning Night, we had a session that was dedicated to families learning how to use the systems in place, Infinite Campus, Seesaw. And so what we did at the K five level this past spring was in addition to the district-wide survey that Erin was talking about, is we sent a separate follow-up to K five families, specifically asking about their communication preference, knowing that we've made a lot of really nice growth, but we wanted to just dig a little bit deeper on that. So one big takeaway that we learned from that feedback, that additional, that follow-up feedback, was Seesaw, which is our K five learning management communication system, was really parents want, they, they want to see, we'll say, student work or experiences, things that are happening during the day. Because very much, you know, like typical student, hey, what did you do today? Oh, nothing, right? So to really just give that, sort of that glimpse into like what's happening into my, into my, you know, my child's learning experience. Second thing is around volunteer, and really, I'll just say, we're calling it sort of like enhancements, because it's not like we're digging for things for, you know, volunteers to do. Really it was around assessing, what do we have happening in the building? Or like, what are we, what are we doing? And what is an opportunity that we could have a volunteer to do those things? So it was identifying those opportunities and then sending out, asking that feedback from families. And so we've identified and said, hey, would you like to? And they could choose different categories. So now we have a nice volunteer bank, and we're essentially kind of matching them up with what is their desires, what do they want to do, and then also schedule-wise. So, so that's kind of a focus for us this year, is to really kind of expand. Because currently, we have an amazing amount of, we'll call them like as-needed volunteers for field trips, our Taste of Wisconsin, you know, classroom activities like we had, and we just have a tremendous amount of parents that volunteer for that. So this is like looking for those individuals who are looking for that more routine, you know, like maybe once a week or even monthly.
All right. At Indian Mound, we are also looking at some volunteer opportunities, but as you can imagine, as the students get older, the students like their parents to be around less and less. So, yeah, it's, so we are really focusing in not only offering opportunities and looking at what we already have for volunteering, but we're specifically have a goal around increasing our mentor program. And I know, I think Fred Bartman has talked with you guys about this at the board in the past, I'm pretty sure at least, that we have a mentor program here at IMMS where we have a goal of increasing it to 25 mentor and mentees this year, and we are hitting that goal. And I think we're actually exceeding it. So we're very excited about that. Also, we are really proud, I think the principals are really proud of the alignment that we've had with our communication, the small newsletter that has been, the last couple of years, we've been focusing in on it, we're sending it out at the same time. We are making sure that the information in there is easy to read, is accessible for everybody, and it's just, I think it's a really positive move that we've made, and we're continuing with that. Another thing that we've done similar to WIS at IMMS, we this year have, we had, not only did the sixth graders come to school for the, the first day by themselves, but we also separated out our welcome back night this year. So we had a sixth grade only welcome back night for our sixth grade students and their families. And this was really fun. You'll see on the picture up there, that, on the left, that is actually a magnet that was made with funds from the Gannon Grant. And that magnet has three different QR codes on there and different explanations of what each learning management system or program can do. So there's one about Infinite Campus, Canvas, and then we have something called the task list, or hubs at the middle school, where families can just jump onto a Google Doc that shares exactly what's going on in the classroom every day of the week. So when they do come home and ask, what did you do today? You can say, I know that you learned about cells and science today. Tell me more about that. So we have that available, and we just want to make sure that families are using it and that they know how to use it, that they know it's out there. So we're working hard on that. And we're continuing to, that two-way communication going with, we will do a focus group this year, but last year, we did a focus group with our new families, so families that were new to the district. We did a focus group to ask them, how is your experience in the district, specifically at Indian Mound? Are there things that we're missing? Do you feel welcomed? Do you feel like you belong? Are there things that are confusing to you? So we were able to get information from those families and implement it in our family and community engagement plans.
Thank you, Jamie. At the high school, something new that we did this last year and plan to continue into the future is we created and sent out an alumni survey. So that alumni survey went to one-year graduates and then also five-year graduates of MHS. We had, it's been years that we've been collecting personal email addresses as they go through like the senior exiting graduation process. We've been collecting them and have needed them, you know, here and there, but we had that information. So we've now used some different alumni surveys that I collected from other area schools to help craft our own alumni survey. This last year, we got around 80 responses, and one of the questions that was kind of neat to read through is, we, we asked if they had any staff shout-outs that they wanted to, as they reflect on their high school years, anyone that kind of stuck with them. So it was kind of neat to be able to read through, you know, five years out and they're still remembering that one activity they did that one week in ninth grade. You know, it's, it's cool to see and be able to, you know, take those and then find a way to share those with our staff members also, has been, has been neat. Another thing that we've got going this year is we've purchased some new screens to have up throughout the building, in some high visible areas. We've got some in our cafeteria, we're working on getting some down now that winter sports are gonna be up and running down near our gyms. We're using these screens to help celebrate and promote and advertise kind of all things MHS, whatever it might be that is worth highlighting or promoting, or trying to get in front of students or community members that might be coming into the building for various activities. Those have been, those have been a good addition and one, one way to, you know, other than just announcements that run one time in the morning and have, you know, who knows who's listening. You know, we like to think everyone's really locked in, but we, we know that, you know, sometimes takes interfacing with something in multiple ways to be able to have it stick. So that's something that we've got up and running this year, and that's been a neat addition to MHS.
Family and Community Engagement at MPS. So in the spirit of continuing to work smart and stay focused, we decided, kind of as Cory had mentioned earlier, they're doing at Wabisa, to instead of create opportunities for volunteers, because we want them to be meaningful, we decided to look at areas where we already bring in volunteers, start there, think about how we can enhance volunteers, increase the volunteer bank. That's one area that we're looking at this year. Something that we continued momentum with when it comes to volunteers from last year is having a volunteer bank. And we're using that volunteer bank, which was compiled from a survey sent out to families at the beginning of the year. What are you interested in? How do you like to help out during the day, after school, behind the scenes with kids, so on and so forth? We have that bank, but we are looking at kind of layering in extra hands throughout the year, because with, you know, anywhere, on any given year, between four to 500, five to eight-year-olds, extra hands is always helpful. So we are starting this first quarter with extra lunchroom helpers. We had that last year. We're thinking about possibilities like having people who are volunteering to come in and read with kids who just need a, an extra boost, an extra motivation to read with somebody. I also heard, mentioned, you heard mentioned, possibly having community members be mentors for kids. We're not really looking to kind of have a huge rollout, we're trying to look for opportunities as they come up and see how we can start to layer those volunteer opportunities in. We're also advertising it outside of the school, too. We know that there's families who might not have kids at MPS right now that want to come help. We know that maybe there's families who have kids at MPS but don't want to help because they want to enjoy it with their kids, and might want to volunteer at other schools. So making sure we know when we have an opportunity that isn't specific to just us, we're getting the word out outside of just our families. Let's see. So focusing really on that volunteer piece, bringing people in, we, we hear loud and clear that people love being connected to school, and that's, that's really our big focus this year, is we have the families coming in, we want to look at the, the volunteers and community members and expand out.
Questions about family and community engagement?
Yeah, I just, this makes me feel so good, because I think just reaching out to community members, whether they be mentoring, or they're just helping out in any way. I, I'm very fortunate that I'm able to go visit the schools, and, and I go there and I just, I leave just always so kind of pleased, but also just amazed at what's going on. And I think the more you get the public to come in to public schools, the more they're impressed with what we're doing and what you guys are doing. So I just think it's, it's really wonderful, so thank you so much.
And I would, I, the, I mean, that's definitely something we learned when we were trying to reach out to that part of the community that doesn't have kids in the school during the referendum, was, you know, we want to know more about what's going on in the school. So this is really, the note I made was just the concentration of working smarter and more intentionally with what we're already doing and focusing on that, I think is really great. The, Cory and I were talking, just because I happened to be at WIS for the family, or the family night? Is that what? Okay. And...
You were volunteering, yeah.
Yes. And so, and so I love that, because I can't, and I know that a lot of other people feel this way, but like I, working during the day, can't come during the day most of the time. And so, learning to be able to volunteer outside of the schools that my kids are in is like really great. And I, when we were chatting, and I know this goes across all the schools, but the intention of the timing of that event, so that it removes barriers for all families to engage, I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's going into all of these events and the community engagement, because it's, like Bruce said, we need everybody to know what great things are happening so that we continue to get support. So, that's great.
It takes a village to raise a child. And you guys are raising children. I mean, that's, that's, you're in the business of doing. It's just, it's amazing.
Oh, and I think the, those common communication, like the strategies to, to make it more consistent across, I think it's totally underrated strategy. Like it's been, I just think about how parents can go through with their kids in each school and just already have those expectations, like, oh, this is when it's gonna come out, this is what it's gonna look like, this is where I can look for it, like, it just makes it more, so much more accessible.
Yeah, and I would just say, that has changed dramatically from when I was teaching, that the schools were just like, again, little silos. And there's this sense, and, you know, Jamie with the sixth grade having that day, and I know the high school has been doing that, that freshmen just kind of come in, get a, get a, a day where you just kind of get a feel what, what's going on in this building and kind of just feel comfortable. I just, I think it's so wonderful for the kids, but also for the parents, so.
I have a question about that specifically, actually. So when you separate things for the, you know, have a separate night for the sixth graders versus the seventh and eighth graders, how much extra work is that for staff? Or is it just kind of spreading it out differently?
It, it, that's a great question. It's not that difficult for staff. The people that it affects most are related arts teachers.
Yes.
So we, this year, kind of let them choose which night they wanted to attend. A lot of them chose the sixth grade night because they already know a lot of the seventh and eighth grade families. And then, you know, then it's two nights for, you know, people who are involved in all three grade levels, the student services and admin. Other than that, it was actually quite lovely, because those nights are so chaotic with all the people coming, and we intentionally had the, we originally had them all, they were all on the same night, and then the sixth grade went a little rogue for this, with this idea, which I think was great. And we've gone back and forth in trying to figure out, should we have them all on the same night, should we not? And it's been working out really well, and we've gotten good feedback, because even though most of them are on the same night, other than the sixth grade, we staggered the times, so people were able to make it to each of them, and it doesn't then take a few nights out of your week if you have students in multiple schools.
Yep, that's great.
Yeah, I think we've really got it, you know, they put together a plan that is not to be changed. It's the best-case scenario.
I agree.
It really has, through trial and error. And I will say, because Jamie wouldn't say this, but it adds a lot of work for administrators.
Yeah, that's what I was agreeing.
Because when you have that separate night, like Jamie and Brett are not, you know, like, oh, I'll just come in at noon these days, because I'm working late tonight. So they are there with the staff that are there that morning, and then, you know, kind of pulling an all-nighter, like some of us are doing right now.
But it's also front-loading, and I think in the end, it's gonna save you time doing that. And that's the thing. I mean, that, it's just a, probably chaos as it's going on, but it, it just makes, in some ways, the year just runs smoother.
And the hope is that, you know, in middle school, they are using Infinite Campus and Canvas. And in high school, they're using Canvas as well. So our hope is that we're building that foundation, so that in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and beyond, we're not learning a new program as a ninth or 10th grade family.
Awesome.
And that was the best magnet ever. So that was the best idea, that was awesome.
Molly Sanders, a sixth grade teacher, and then Kylie Ogadogu designed it.
Yes, and thank you to the Gannon Grant.
I wish, I wish we could broadcast just this part of the meeting, like ride around in a car with a speaker through McFarland, because I think families don't understand exactly how much intentionality there's happening with each communication and change that's being made. So, thank you for that.
All right, moving on. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Exceptional staff, we, they're so exceptional, we have two objectives for them. First is to provide an inclusive work environment that fosters open communication, collaboration, growth, and support to promote high levels of well-being, followed by actively recruiting and retaining a diverse staff representative of a global society. And our key performance indicators here are really focused on our school perceptions survey, which is a staff check-in survey that they complete annually, the engagement index and the staff experience index, engagement meaning you like working at school, because you feel valued, heard, and can contribute. Those scores went down slightly, 1%, one percentage point, but still... But still, a 3.87 is high in growth over time. The staff experience index focuses on staff feeling accepted, respected and supported at school. Again, a slight decrease, but also very high at a 3.89. So looking to get those up over the 4.0 average. We also look at our staff retention rate. We've been focusing on certified staff and I'll talk about what we're doing to expand that. And that has been at 94%. The last couple of years was 95% the year before. And that includes retirees as well. So that 6% includes some retirees. Our line district work, really looking at, this really came from our staff wanting to talk a little bit about healthy conflict. So learning how to have constructive disagreements together. So we talk about issues and when we see things differently, we don't just, you know, say, oh no, it's fine, and then go talk about it later. We talk about it in the moment, learn together because that's how you grow. So that's a focus that you'll hear. We're also looking at our staff retention plan by, looking at it differently by different categories of staff because some, some jobs are inherently a little bit more transient. There are more life circumstances at that point than, than others. But also what can we, what matters to those staff at the, in that role? What is most important to them? It is different across staff categories. And then finally, you've heard about the collaborative classroom visits. That's also a way to build that collaborative culture across staff that we talked about earlier. So Jamie's going to get us started.
All right, exceptional staff. As we all know, it is not an easy job to be a teacher. And we are working really hard to create the conditions for success, for our teachers to be able to be successful at their job every day. So one thing that we have done at Indian Mound this year, going off of what Erin said, is working on our, our healthy conflict. We're really, we, we're working on the quote we use is clear as kind. If anybody has read Dare to Lead by Brene Brown, it's an amazing book. And myself and Brett Jondal have both recently read it. Mine was for the second or third time. I don't know for sure. And also the art of coaching teams. So those two resources are really helping us. So this year, Indian Mound, we made a commitment that, so all of our teams have community agreements, how we do business with each other. And we've made a commitment that we are going to have a community agreement around our healthy conflict and leaning into discomfort and having those difficult conversations with each other when they come up so that we can, you know, we can really get into the solutions instead of getting stuck on, on the problems. We are also as a, as an A council and for our building leadership team, we are all assessing our team effectiveness and we're setting goals around that. So we're really measuring like, how are we doing as a team? How are each of our teams, so not just BLT, but also the grade level teams? Everybody is taking a look at, are we successful as a team? How are we meeting our community agreements and fulfilling our agendas? One other thing that we're doing at Indian Mound and all schools, but Indian Mound, we've had, we have a few new staff this year. And so we're doing something called triads with our new staff. So it's a meeting with myself and the, a new staff member, their mentor, and then our district mentor. And we're talking with our new staff members, I believe it's twice a year. We just got through most of the fall ones and talking about how are things going for our new staff. This is different and above and beyond the educator effectiveness process. And it's really specifically giving our new staff an opportunity to have sit down time with their administrator and their mentor to talk about how things are going and really look at the goals that they have for themselves. And finally, we're focused on our staff wellbeing. We are, one of the goals that we have from our survey, our perception survey is really increasing, continue to increase our healthy life work balance. And we are looking specifically at staff productivity and email in particular. And Erin's probably tired of me saying this, but I'm really excited about, we, it's just the little things. We added the little emoji response to our emails and I'm so excited about it because many times you get an email and somebody will write back like all this, you know, stuff that you don't have to actually respond to, just like, I got it. Or, you know, a little emoji to it. And so we're giving our staff, I'm giving the staff permission to not have to respond to everything and just like, let's, let's be efficient in our productivity so that we can have a balance where we're not feeling like we need to respond to every single email. We just know we got it. And, and making those connections, spending that time making connections with each other and with our students.
Thank you. Jamie, at the high school. One of our school goals heading into this year, after analyzing our school perceptions staff check-in survey, was to increase our agreement percentage on our lowest three questions from the 2425 survey. So we just looked at the staff responses, one of our, our three kind of worst areas and hoping to see an increase in those three this next school year. The next bullet point there is just that we are having some full staff climate and culture check-ins throughout the year. We realized we only give that one school perception survey one time throughout the year. So now we are intentionally asking those three lowest questions from the prior year a couple more times throughout the year, just so we can have a pulse on that and not get, you know, one data point in April or whenever that we actually receive the data from that. And we're, we're hoping that that might give us a look into, you know, what time of year might we need to really be up in our ante in this, this, that or the other thing because we realize there's some ebbs and flows there as well. We're just trying to see if there's any sort of trends in, in how staff would be responding to that. Another thing we're doing is a couple, or Jamie at least had mentioned the, the work with their teams and the different teams that are meeting throughout their building. And we are doing the same thing at the high school. We had and still do have quite a few different teams that meet. And we spent some time in the fall really making sure that we were, you know, aligning our purpose, making sure that everyone knew what this group's purpose or what this team's purpose was. What goals do we have for these groups? Why are we meeting? Why are we meeting in this, this routinely or when are we meeting? And just making sure that we didn't have any of the, the frivolous time being spent just because Jamie, like Jamie also said, you know, staff are pulled in 75 different directions. So if we're going to be asking them to commit their time to this meeting, let's make sure that it's for, for something that we all can agree on and all agree that it adds value to the school. So that's the high school.
Do you want to see some of the, I mean, it's so cute.
Oh, that's our staff intro video for the year.
Well, now it doesn't want to do it anymore. Well, I can send it to you. They got to pick how they were introduced. They're all appropriate. So I wouldn't show this to the public without them. Anyway, you get the. No, I'm going to cut them off. I'm leaving them hanging.
You'll send it to us?
I love the music.
Yeah.
All right. I have a little, a little joke. When we were, when we were having our, I will be quick. When we were having our August building leadership team meetings and looking at our, all of our survey data and our data from the last year and talking about school improvement and brainstorming, we were talking about the exceptional staff pillar. And I, I, I said some comments about people were brainstorming. And I went into a transition and I was going to say, okay, that's exceptional staff. And the whole group was very pleased with themselves because they thought I was complimenting them as exceptional staff. And I was like, well, you are. We're talking about the exceptional staff pillar. We're exceptional staff at MPS though. Don't let me, don't let me get you any other way about it. So we work a lot. We learn a lot. We have, we collaborate together a lot. But one thing I'm going to highlight, so don't forget all of what I just said, is we realized we're going to have fun together this year too. When it comes to job satisfaction, there's a lot that goes into it and sometimes you just need something to look forward to. We also have a goal as a building leadership team of having fun together as a team too. So not that we're all just miserable sitting there when we get together, but we realize we need to put more intention into it. So this year, our building leadership team is going to plan at least four, we've committed to different types of staff joy. So different staff joy events. Because there's some people who, if you put on a painting event with quiet music, people will flock to it, but they might not flock to the karaoke in the gym. So we're going to try to meet a lot of different participation and engagement and preference styles too. So we, we, it's just a small taste of the work we're doing when it comes to exceptional staff. But it stands out because, yeah, we do it every year, but this year we're putting intention into it. Because we realized we do a lot, why not put a little bit of effort into just making sure we're having fun with each other while we do all the hard work?
At Wabesa, no jokes from me tonight. But really kind of focusing on three areas here with the exceptional staff, collaboration, feedback and wellbeing. Collaboration, we talked earlier about some of the ways that we want staff, what we want them to do, but really it comes down to like making sure that we find protected time for them to do those things. So one of the things that we're really making sure we prioritize is their, their Thursday morning PLC time. And that looks a little different at our school just because of the way our schedule works out to really get all of the same content teachers per grade level. We have, we have the students start with a, a deer time, which is drop everything and read. So really prioritizing that because oftentimes there can be some things that can get in the way that could, you know, override that. So protecting that time. And then stat, the CCVs were mentioned a little bit earlier, the collaborative classroom visits. So that's feedback and really kind of just like opening up that. I think if you come and visit our school, our staff are really pretty open to visitors in their, in the classroom. And our staff were saying within their, within their surveys too, like wanting feedback from us as administrators. So feedback doesn't always have to be evaluative. It's constructive and it's about getting better. And so Leah and I are working on finding through both the formal evaluation processes. And then also just when we do those quick drop-ins, so we can just send a quick note or just have that, you know, quick conversation. Because it doesn't need to be elaborate and in-depth. And then also thinking about, and you often hear this during the season of staff appreciation time. Our staff, really the thing they appreciate the most is small notes of appreciation or just like, hey, nice job. So we were kind, we were really focusing on three different avenues, you know, staff to staff, recognizing one another. Students, so this is a big shift for us this year. So we have ways that students can shout out and recognize their staff members. So we've generated through our weekly news cast that the students put on, they created these QR codes that kids can just use their iPads. And then we also have embedded for our families, a quick way within our weekly communication that they can jump in and shout out staff members. But one quote I just wanted to share with you, this is coming from a fourth grader, by the way. Shouted out their teacher and said, she always greets me in a friendly way in the morning. She makes me feel good. So if we think about our focus on, you know, student belonging, but, you know, coming from a fourth grader to, to take the time to do that. So that's just an example of what our kids are doing. Yeah.
Excellent. Questions, comments about exceptional staff?
I just want to say, you know, when I saw this figure that we were, we were down, where was that? It's on the second page here. And I was thinking, okay, why is that? Because from my experience, after I retired and then getting into this, I've only, I, I really, I don't know how to say this. I'm not, I'm not one who's really into data and I know that sounds crazy. It's really hard to quantify feeling good. I'm sorry. And I have a hard time. And there's a part of me feels the reason this is going down is I think you guys have done a terrific job. And it starts with you. You've made teachers feel valued and feel supportive. And you know what? I think it makes them also feel like they're willing to probably say, yeah, I, I wish it was a little better here and a little bit better there. Because honestly, I, I think you guys are doing an amazing job. And as I said, I try to go around, I try to see all the schools. I don't pry. I don't want to go and say, oh, how's it going? What's going on? Stuff like this. But the truth of the matter is you can just feel it. And I think there's a, there's a sense of just, they're comfortable. And I think they're, they're not afraid to say. I use this analogy, when I ran and I was a competitive runner, after I ran the best race of my life, the first thing I thought is dang, I could have run faster. And that, that's a really silly thing to think. You go like, well, how can you run faster than you've ever run in your life? But I think that's part of just being successful. And I think we've done that. So just thank you.
I wondered too if the drop, and I can't remember if we had, if we have any data that supports it, but I wondered if the drop was more like valued by society as opposed to valued by the district in those, in the feeling.
You know, that's a really good point because I know some of the feedback we got during the referendum was that staff didn't feel that the community and didn't necessarily have their back if they didn't pass a referendum. So that could also take into consideration as well.
But and, and so speaking of the referendum, like these are really creative and intentional ways that aren't costing any additional dollars to be able to support people and feeling valued, which I think we're going to have to continue to do with our legislative situation. So I really commend you for that. And I love that it's really specific to each of the things that is needed at your schools. So.
And just to be clear for the public that aren't looking at the numbers, so the engagement index went from a 3.91 to a 3.87. So I just, I want to be cautious that yes, that's technically a drop. I think we're within the margin of error. And then the staff experience index went from a 3.92 to a 3.89 average. So.
Also a great point.
Out of five.
Out of five.
Yes.
Out of five. And, and all of those have increased significantly since our baseline in 2022, 23.
Right. And Megan, your point is well taken because they can't help but feel they're not getting supported by this state, at least our legislature.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so it's, they realize it's, it's a tough job. I do want to just also just say it is the little things that make the difference. It's the little reach out. It's the little stop in. I had experiences where I'd have an administrator stop in on the last day of school to kind of check the box, like, I, I saw you. I'm going, the last day of school is about as unrepresentative as it could possibly be. And so those little tiny things, and I've seen all of you out and about in the hallways. And it's just so refreshing. So thanks.
Yeah, I think you guys have been really creative in ways to meet your staff where they are knowing that they're in this milieu of uncertainty maybe and being, feeling undervalued in a time when I, we value them very much, but sometimes it's not as obvious. So you've done really creative work on making sure that that happens. And back to that word, I think word of the night is intentional, like you're being intentional about it. And I think as a leader, it's really easy to say, like especially with like protected time, Corey, like it's, oh, we're just going to, you know, go over it this week. Or we're just going to like change it this week and we'll go back to it. That's a slippery slope. And I think when you are an example of making sure you're intentional with your time and those check-ins and et cetera, I think that's your staff learn from your leadership. And I think that that will pay yourselves and us and our kids forward. And then I think the only other comment I think I would make is to staff who may be watching, we use this data. So when you're asked to participate in surveys, this is really important information that we get, gather that helps us make decisions on behalf of you and decisions that your administrators do as well. So thank you for the extra time it takes to do that. It does matter. So thank you.
Excellent.
To our exceptional staff.
Yes, agreed. Good point.
And last but not least, I will take care of resource allocation because there aren't much differences across the building. So I will, I will talk about this. This is where we're doing two things. One is creating a fiscally and environmentally responsible operational plan that is equitable, sustainable and adaptable to evolving needs and priorities while also deepening our investment in diversity, equity, inclusion efforts through community partnerships and district actions. So there's a fair amount of things. So there's a fair amount of things when you think about, how do we measure this? It's really about how do we allocate our resources? Do we use our funds, our time focused on the other three pillars? But in terms of our, our district-wide work, there's many standard operating procedures that we, you don't put those in a school improvement plan, because you're not improving standard operating procedures, but they're working. But the unique things is, of course, with the pausing of the position of the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging coordinator is distributing those efforts across to other roles. And also looking, we're evaluating our staff compensation system. You know, how are, how, how is that model serving our staff? How is it recruiting and retaining staff? And then finally, we're conducting a kind of a family-student audit of financial needs and barriers to, to students having their, their needs met. So what are those things that we can, can eliminate that will allow them to have better access to services? So that came out of our summer work largely through the administrative team, but then our, the McFarland School's Equity Collective is also working on, on that work. So what are the things, especially given these times and the financial needs of our families are only growing in our community? So how do we meet those needs? So those are just a few of the things. So that is all we have to share for all of you. So any final questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just point out to the public that all of you, in a sense, had a freeze in your salary, I believe, at one point, or it was, it was a minimal whatever. And I just, I just, I just, I don't know how to thank you people. I mean, we, we tried to live within our means. And I remember when we were putting that strategic plan together, I kept on thinking in my mind, we have to make it sustainable, that it keeps going. And I think you have all done that. And we, I think as the board are trying to do the same as best we can.
That's true.
Now please go get some sleep, because you guys have early mornings.
It is true, it's time for that.
Thank you all for your leadership.
I got the same exact one.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, y'all.
Very much.
Thank you too, Erin.
Yes.
My pleasure, I am going to stick around.
Great.
Fabulous. We're not gonna let you go to bed yet, but really soon. Okay, um, next, more informational item about the school safety written drill evaluation notification and review per our Wisconsin statute.
Yes, you can see there was a hold, administrative hold at Wabisa for a student privacy issue there.
Yes, I'm, it's, sorry, the transition from something so big and like thought-provoking is always like, okay, what are we doing next? And yet down to the little things that make a difference. This was, it was like so detailed and helpful. I just always love that they're constantly reviewing and lesson learned, so that's great. All right, Fisher, you're up with the annual K-12 Stride Summit update. What you got for us?
I don't think I have a lot, and I feel bad. I've been going and attending all of the, the Weaver, you know, board meetings. I know this past year, they tried to implement some new software, and they said they, they, they had some problems and they struggled with it. I think one of the things that are, what I'd really like the public to realize is, and it to me is almost frightening, is they're still expecting about 10% growth year in, year out. And I, I just, it's, it's amazing. And the fact that Scott Brown, our former superintendent, had the foresight to say, let's, you know, make ourselves available for them. And we're able to hitch our, our, I guess our, hitch a ride to that star, which is taking off and is providing really a significant amount of revenue for our district, it's just wonderful. And I know they just keep on working on trying to keep kids involved and, you know, trying to build on the retention. I know this year that the, the number of students in the Insight School is down. But otherwise, the high school, the middle school, the elementary, it's, it's going up. And I just think they do an amazing job, so I don't know if I can tell you a lot more details on that.
That's great.
As the Insights remind me again, and I apologize, I should know this off the top of my head. Insights is, I don't want to call it the last resort.
It is.
It is.
And they, 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 they say that. These are kids who have gone through just about everything, and they, they've pretty much, they and their parents are like, you know, this is a last chance, and it does an amazing job.
Yeah, and I think some of the numbers we've had in other meetings really speak to that. And maybe when you said it's been a decline, like it kind of also makes me think if they're having that growth, maybe we're capturing them earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that's really.
That's a very good point.
I mean, and I don't know what data we have to support that, but it was, you know, just, just thought that that's, when we have good systems, I think we'll see them working, and that's, yeah, anyway, just sorry.
Decline might not be bad, it might be actually really good.
Yes, happy, happy decline, anyway, happy decline, just go with it.
Well, and the other thing that to consider with, with the virtual academies is what they start the year off with is not what they finish. They continue to increase in enrollment throughout the year.
True.
As kids are finding challenges and feeling unsuccessful in their brick and mortar is when you start to see that. So Insight will see some increase, but I think they're starting their year a little bit lower than previous years. But it's a small population to start with.
It is small, it's the smallest of the schools. The other thing is, they, they have, you know, they have the courage to try like this new software. And I mean, I guess I applaud the fact that they're willing to, to try things out. I think that's, that's really good. And they're getting the bugs worked out, and I think it's, it's, it's going well.
It's not the same that we use.
No.
So they have that challenge too.
All right, thank you, Bruce, you did a fine job. All right, business and education partnership update, Chapman.
Okay, so we had our first business and education partnership meeting a couple of weeks ago. And what this is, it's a group that comes together incorporating the McFarland Chamber of Commerce, various business owners, as well as DECA, Skills USA. A couple of teachers get involved, some administrators, and just kind of talk about collaborating from a business and education perspective, kind of goes with the name. So the first thing we chatted about was the Student-Employ Excellence Award. Last year, we gave away eight of those. And typically, we would surprise the student during lunch. They don't know they're getting the award, and they're actually nominated by a business that they work for. So the first one will actually be held in November. And what we're really trying to cultivate is McFarland businesses that have student employees nominating those students. So we are actually going to be working with a student to create a QR code for businesses to help nominate those students. So first one's coming up in November, we don't know who it is, but it'll be fun. We also had Brian Helen Brand pop in and discuss his, he's a personal finance teacher here. And he went over his stock market challenge with the, with his students. So each student actually receives $10,000 in virtual funds to invest and simulate real market experiences. And Brian did actually put out a request for some gift cards as awards for top performing students. So it's real time, it's, it's pretty cool from what I understand. I could probably learn quite a bit from that experience, but either way. So then we moved into DECA and Skills USA updates. We do have two new DECA officers, we have Jonathan Terrell and Eli Frankie. And DECA, the membership has really increased things. So they're now at more than 150 students this year, which is an addition of anywhere between like 20 and 35 from last year. So Jonathan and Eli gave us a great overview. Their most recent event was COW, which is the Chapter Officer Workshop. And McFarland's chapter won the COW Cup for the first time, woo-woo, go them. And I know we talked about the fundraisers a little bit, but we talked about the Blackout to Block Out Cancer raised over $1,000, which was actually the highest ever Miracle Minute total ever, which was great. And then Valley for a Cure raised $360. So total thus far is $4,279 for the Carbone Cancer Center. So then we just talked about some upcoming events. We already chatted about the Tricker Can Food Drive that they did. And then DECA is actually going to be a Chicago, going to do a Chicago slash Milwaukee trip in December. And they're gonna be also visiting Marquette and UW-Milwaukee on that trip. There's gonna be the Emerging Leader Conference at the Kalahari in November. And then as we start looking more towards like the DECA competition piece, there is going to be a mini-district competition on December 22nd. And so Penny Thompson is gonna be looking for judges for that. If you've never judged a DECA competition, I highly suggest you do it, it's super fun. I did it last year, I did regionals because I was in DECA. And actually Penny Thompson was my DECA teacher at Middleton High School. Yes, small world, I know. So if you guys are interested in volunteering, just reach out to Penny, it's super fun, and they tell you how to do everything. So looking at Skills USA, Anthony Keel is the student leader of that one. So he did a recap of the Firestone Challenge, what happened in May at MATC, which is really just hands-on automotive competitions. Skills USA State will be, was held at Alliant Energy Center this year. Unfortunately, we did not have any winners, but we did have several runners-up, runners-up, which is pretty fantastic. And the next district competition will be in Beloit. We are going to be doing, or I should say, they are going to be doing a fundraiser where they're doing a snow blower tune-up. We are still working on the date and cost of that, but as soon as I have that info, I will obviously share it.
Yes, please.
And then just from a membership capacity, Skills USA and the Robotics Club have actually merged. So that has taken the membership of Skills USA from eight to over 20 students. And the majority of those students are actually underclassmen, which is pretty fantastic. So then just some upcoming events, we have Reality Zone on November 18th this year. And then the next one in 2026 will be on March 17th. And then looking towards 2026, we have Advising Night on February 11th, Senior Exit Interviews, May 21st and 22nd, and then Real World Day on May, or Real World Day sometime in May. We haven't, don't have that date yet. So then just a couple of other things, we did some brainstorming regarding how we can support students during ACT and pre-ACT testing. So looking at, we just realized that there's really a need for academic support for students, really at the end of the semesters. And then we discussed how to maintain school operation during those ACT, pre-ACT test days. Because on those days, only the kids taking the test are actually at school. So kind of figuring out other things that we can do. So some of those brainstorming ideas that for freshmen, we could do walking tours of local businesses to learn about employment opportunities, because they're right at the age when they start looking at, you know, getting after-school and weekend jobs. We also chatted about possibly doing a career fair for non-storefront businesses. So whether we held it here or held it at the municipal center, so that way students could actually go and chat with various businesses instead of us going to them. Sophomores trying to coordinate college visits, you know, Whitewater's really, really close. So that could be an area of opportunity, and then seniors working on their exit interviews. So then just a couple of other things coming up. Our next BEP meeting is gonna be in February. And then the one after that will be in April of next year. Some chamber updates, we did scarecrows in the park, obviously, so that was great to see all those scarecrows out there. And then Winter in the Village, which I know everyone is very excited about, is on December 6th. So Santa, obviously, bonfire, bender fair, local open houses. And then apparently there's a very big surprise, but they're not telling us what it is, hence the surprise. They wouldn't even allude to what it was, so. But I kind of have a feeling Erin knows.
Oh, I know.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna ask nicely, but I'm not gonna share it.
You said that's the sixth?
That is the sixth, yep. And then if anybody wants these notes, I have them saved, so I can just send them out. Then just a couple of other things that we already talked about, the Spartan Cafe, the grand opening looked like it went really, really well. So that's super fun. And then a Spartan Nutrition just opened their new location right across the street. So anybody needs to go get a shake, Carly is ready and ready to go to get you your protein shake and other delicious iced tea needs.
I think they just had Student Day or Seniors?
They did.
Yes.
A high school student?
Yeah, that's right, did or just, was it coming up?
They did.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great way.
And I'm glad I didn't have to follow them. So thank you, Mr. Tarnitzer. Can I just add, just an interesting thought, just a kind of aside? I came in today, cause I read this article in the, I want to say the thistle, sorry.
Leader Independent.
Right, Leader Independent, of course, yes. And at Cambridge High School, they have set up a new school store. And as I'm reading through it, I'm going, Lisa, what is it, Lisa Hart Olsen, is that? I'm trying to remember her name.
Sarah Hart Olsen.
Sarah Hart, sorry, sorry, Sarah, not that you're, you're here anymore. But she worked with our, in the DECA program and our, yeah. And I was just, it's so interesting, because I happened to run into Ginger Veer House at the, in the copy room, and I talked to her about it, she says, "Oh yeah, we're still in contact." And to me, copying what people are doing is like the, in, in education, that is the ultimate compliment.
Oh, for sure.
When you have a great idea, and here she's taking it, what's that? Yeah.
Admire and inquire, I like that.
She's set up something that basically we're already doing, and I think it's so cool. So I think McFarland is, well, that, that whole department is just blowing things away, it's pretty amazing.
McFarland is full of exceptional staff.
That's right.
Boop, boop, boop. Awesome, thank you, Megan, that was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions about that? All right, Mr. Tarnitzer, Mr. T, you're up.
All right, so we are going to start with some stuff going on around the district. Can see, yes, at the primary school, the 4K family fun night. So just a fun way to bring the, our youngest learners together. So it looks like it was a lot of fun, love the smiles. Moving on to, they, this class earned a, a surprise, or a reward. So Amanda's class earned a reward, so then they got to watch the D1 Clarkson Women's Hockey Game because her niece is in it.
Aww, that's amazing.
Or Greta, I'm sorry, is in it. So kind of a neat thing for the class to get to do, so kind of a fun way. And cheering on Clarkson with Greta Brzezinski.
That's awesome.
Playing for them, kind of a different thing there. This was surprised for Principal's Day, surprised Greg by dressing like him.
That's funny.
And he didn't notice.
Maybe some of the joy he talked about?
Until they pointed it out to him.
Having fun together?
Yes.
So funny.
Well, the author visit, I've mentioned this to you many times, but here's some pictures from that. Sounds like it went really, really well.
Good.
Yeah. Here's the little sixth graders at Camp Timberly. It's always good to see them out doing pond study.
There's a massive turtle.
There.
At that pond.
Yeah.
Like the thing is huge.
As long as it's not a snapper, you're okay.
Yeah, and then the, having some fun at the campfire. Great event, getting able to spend some time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that Addison?
I think it is Addison. Here you have Futures Class, so that's an eighth grade class, or eighth graders, a career development class. They're doing a little challenge with juggling, so a little brain break and testing ourselves and learning about fixed versus growth mindsets. You can see a new food item, apple nachos there. Mr. Jondal there modeling those, they look so good.
I'm really hungry now, thank you.
Right.
The, we had the Fall Craft Fair, and I know that Megan and Bruce were able to go. Wonderful event that really brings in people from around the area and of course the community as well. Special uh thanks to Tamra, who is the lead organizer, and Sarah Sheen, who also helps as well as the many people. Who are part of that, just a really great event. They also do Club Unified, provides a, a space for kids. To come and hang out while their.
My granddaughters were in heaven. Going from vendor to vendor.
Yeah, so many vendors.
The Club Unified had, there's this sticker here, they were handing out stickers about um Down Syndrome Awareness. And they had, they went through like the design process, and then they had people, um, one of the students' families donated the stickers. But they just like were able to articulate it so well, so much better than I can. Um, as part of, as part of that, so it was like so, and then all the craft first off, cause then there were students doing crafts.
Well done.
Fun.
Great event. You saw this already, um, and heard about this and raising over four thousand dollars for cancer research there. This was a very popular, um, kind of a viral social media post uh with Officer Towns and the MPD. Given a tour to our eighteen to twenty-one transition program of the. Then the new safety center. Uh, the Optimist Club Senior of the Month, Jonathan, what I think um Megan was just talking about a little bit before.
I didn't wanna give him a shout-out during my session, cause I figured you would do it here.
So was, was nominated by Ginger um as well, and very deserving of this award. He was very humbled by it. And then as you heard um a little earlier from Brett Jacobson, that Cassidy. Won a New Teacher of the Year Award from the Wisconsin Marketing Educator Association, so. Really exciting, engaging teacher, really bringing out the best, uh developing strong relationships with our kids. So congratulations to her.
Yes, congrats.
And then of course, you heard about the runners-up, the girls' cross-country team. And, and Insider told me, there was, there was moments where they thought they were gonna be first.
Oh, really?
Yeah, cause at state, they kinda keep you posted as you are running, right?
Yeah, they all have chips, so they, they run past these spots and you just know at all the runners, the wide, exactly what place they're in and everything else. What's cool about them, I will just say, is that every one of their kids. Uh, and it was the same for the, the, the boy Henry, um, they passed so many people. From the first mile to the last. I mean, they, you can keep track of it, and they were just gunning people down. It was really, really very exciting.
Very exciting, so thanks to the coaches and for all their hard work. And then this was also another viral post. We had our three uh Wisconsin Teachers of the Year. From nineteen ninety-four to two thousand seventeen.
Amazing.
Pat Rossman, Kim Brown, and Joe Rundy. It's a great picture.
They don't age.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't, didn't just happen. We had National School Bus Safety Week. We're just so uh fortunate to have such a great company with Nelson's, keeping our kids safe. They really take it seriously and uh provide a safe and enjoyable transportation to and from school. And it is National School Psychology Week, so we're really lucky to have such a great team. For amazing school psychologists that really are so talented and definitely would be. Other districts would love to have them, we won't let them go.
But that's the prior, prioritizing that you put into place.
Yeah.
It's really important.
We also have the uh, the, we sent a post out about the forward results, which you already mentioned earlier, you know, leaves. And that's that for that part. So um, other things, I've had superintendent listening sessions in all of the buildings. Great to talk to staff, had a lot of thoughts, a lot of good questions, ideas, so appreciate them. We do those, try to do those three times a year. Um, conferences, thanks to everybody for all their work, all of the, the staff for spending so much time preparing for conferences. They went very well. Uh, Calendar Committee had our first and only meeting of the year, so I will be sending an email out to staff with a draft calendar. For their feedback and then bringing it to you. The calendar uh proposed, looks very similar to this year's calendar. It just worked out that way, but we'll see how it ends up. Uh, we uh, in the month of October, had the highest substitute fill rate in the Midwest. Among E S S districts, so.
Wow.
Yep, we went from ninety-one percent last October to a ninety-nine percent fill rate. Yep, so really proud of that. Um, so many people do the hard work and um wanna give credit, of course, to um Carrie Roberts. For her leadership, Sam Pruden here, who's our E S S um site supervisor coordinator. I don't know what her title is, but anyway. But really, it honestly is about the experience from the moment our subs walk in. And how they're greeted by the administrative assistants, the office, and how other teachers support them. That's why they say we keep coming back there because of how well we're taken care of.
And that is so true. That's exactly what it is.
Makes the difference. Um, thank you to um someone who wrote some letters to the editor about school funding, Meredith Huey.
Yeah.
Don't know her. Yeah, so thank you for doing that. I think you represented the challenges very well. Appreciate that. I'm sure those are just going crazy, everybody's.
Oh, I'm sure everyone's gonna run out and find them.
Yep, I hope so. Well, as long as one person does.
No, it was so beautiful.
Yeah, it was really good.
Succinct.
The school, uh, the high school has formed a super group um of equity leaders, uh, the. The, I think they're called the Coalition, I think Equity Coalition, uh, who has representatives from our different social justice groups. So Dana Shamer's really been leading that as one of our high school associate principals. Their goals are to continue to offer school and community partnered events that center around equity and promoting awareness. Support, advocacy, partnership, and celebration of disaggregated communities. As well as bringing voice to school-based equity groups to everyday community and school concerns, so really appreciate them. Uh, for their leadership, they've had, I think, two meetings now. I was able to go to the last one. They had a lot of questions about recognition of different holidays. And, and events, so it's really good. Um, November is Native American Heritage Month, where we um recognize that Wisconsin is home to eleven federally recognized. Um, um, Native nations and one federally unrecognized nation. So let's remember the sacrifices uh that our indigenous population has made. Youth Homeless Awareness Month as well, and that was decided in two thousand twenty-one, it was designated uh in November. So since then, every November, we, we talk about um homelessness um, and among our youth. Um, and of course, Natu- National Veterans and Militaries Families Month is November. Uh, where we, you know, recognize the, the service and, and honor those that have, have sacrificed for all of us and our freedom. November first was Dia de los Muertos, or the Day of the Dead, which is a traditional Mexican holiday. That um is expanding to other cultures, actually, and on that day, um, it is believed the souls of the dead return to visit their uh living family members. So positive thing. The Mung New Year is also the first and the second, uh, where it's, it's to celebrate the harvest season at the end of October. Um, and it's a time to celebrate the harvest and rejoice in the community. Uh, I mentioned National School Psychology Week, and we have WIS Family Teacher Conferences this week. We have the um sixth grade band choir concert orchestra, con- sixth grade band choir and orchestra concert, I think is tomorrow night. And the Fall Play, which was mentioned earlier. The Badger Conference Honor Band this week, uh, or next week, next Monday and Tuesday. Veterans Day, of course, is the eleventh, where we honor those who served our country. Then we have a Village and School Joint Planning Committee meeting on the eleventh. The uh McFarland Schools Equity Collective meets on the twelfth, we have Employee Relations Committee on the thirteenth. The Choir Cabaret at the High School is on the fifteenth. And also on the fifteenth is the Model U N Conference for Madison Area that's being hosted right here.
Yes.
We are hosting it.
That's great.
In, in our facilities, and we'll be back here on the seventeenth. That's all I have. Uh, anything else that all you have?
I would just like to give a shout-out to our Communications Director-esque person for all of their amazing social media posts.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, that would be Angie.
They've been fantastic, seriously. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but. Like especially after the governance meeting where we talked about the importance of, you know, social media engagement and that sort of thing. You are doing a wonderful job. You're welcome.
Our social media manager.
Yes, I didn't want to communicate, I didn't, you know, I don't know what you're, we, we, I know you don't have a title yet, but we should get you a title.
Yeah, it's really been good, and the, the posts have really been getting a lot of visibility and interaction.
Well, the nice thing is, is that the more people that watch them, the more people that engage, you know, that algorithm does work to our advantage.
It does.
It's true, it does, yes.
It does, as well as putting together the community newsletter that just went out.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, which is also aligned with the format of the school newsletters. So it's not just across schools that we're doing that, so that's great, yes. Um, I wanted to send a gratitude to all my fellow school board members, Bruce is not absent now.
A long meeting, it's a long meeting.
No, it's a long meeting, I don't wanna wait, I'll have to tell them after, but um, October was super busy. And I know that one of our goals to be more engaged as a school board and more visible in the community. Is maybe not something that was included when you first sign on, and so, um, but I do think it's important. So I really appreciate the extra sacrifices that people have been making, Bruce included. Um, to be do, to be at different events, at different schools, it's, I think it's just really, I'm hearing lots of great feedback, so. Um.
Good, good.
Yeah, so, yeah, the people at the Craft Fair were really, were really appreciative, um. And then just as part of that, a shout-out that we are having school board office hours. We're trying to do that quarterly, so the next one is November fifteenth, from eight AM to ten AM. Um, at the McFarland House Cafe. They don't know that yet, but they're always very welcoming. Um, and then Bruce, I was just thanking school board members for the extra time put in to be more visible with the community. So, um, October was especially bus- busy, so. Um, and then one other shout-out that is gonna make Erin uncomfortable, but um, it needs to be said. Um, he was recognized by the Wisconsin School Counselors Association. Um, as, with a Supervisor Administrator Award. Did you not know this, Angie? Oh, for heaven's sake, see? That is why I'm doing it now. I think it's important to be recognized when you earn an award. Um, humble people do not make sure everyone knows, so I'm making sure for you. Um, but also appreciate, so Casey Ruland nominated Erin, and so I think it's also really nice and important. To see that colleagues and people within the district consistently nominate each other. Like this is not one, the first time that someone has nominated a colleague and, you know, supervisor, and I think it's just really. Heartwarming to see, so thank you for being you.
Thank you, it's quite an honor, very humbling, but our Student Services Team is just amazing, and so. I just support them and we hired more of them, so thank you for your willingness to do that.
It's a good investment. That's all I have.
Um, I don't know how to follow that, cause that's, this is ending on a high note, but um. Um, kudos to um Amy Martin um in, at MPS. Um, for helping to facilitate, I think this is the third, maybe, second, third, um, Family Book Club. Um, as we talk about literacy, I think it's um really important that we have families read together, and especially at that age. Um, and I think the, the program that I've been able to participate in the past couple of years has been phenomenal. Um, and it's, a lot of work goes into that and coordinating it and books and um extra details and questions. And um how to read with your kid to get them to engage differently, um, are really valuable tools. So thank you, Amy and team, um, for making that a possibility and a priority. Um, and they're showing the Bad Guys movie um, this coming weekend, the eighth, at nine thirty at the PAC. So um, if you're reading that book along with the Family Book Club, please participate um in fun, because reading is fun. Um, and the second piece of that, um, not that particular item, but other, I guess, kudos or just awareness. Um, when Erin mentions the um, like November being um national, like homeless month and trying to. Bring awareness to that, um, we do have homelessness in our student population in our district. Um, so for those of, um, those in the community who think, oh, that's a nice monthly thing to, to recognize or to be more aware of. It doesn't impact us, that is not true. Um, we do have students who are impacted on a daily basis with homelessness. So um, as we look and make decisions as a board, we um keep all of that in mind. Um, so, um, continue supporting our students, that's all I've got.
All right, anything else? We get to move on to our action items tonight. I know, we almost forgot what they are. Um, okay, so the first is action on the. Mc, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six McFarland Youth Center Memorandum of Understanding. Do I have any?
I, I can make that. I move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Memorandum of Understanding between the McFarland School District. And the McFarland Youth Center as presented.
I can second.
Chapman, all right, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries four zero. Okay, on this next piece, I'm gonna go a little rogue with a little opinion. From Angie and Erin. I'm wondering if we can postpone the first reading of the policies, or if that will really mess up meeting schedules in the future. Cause it's a relatively light policy set, and it's so late.
There are some implications.
Okay.
Um, because before we can receive the next round of policy updates. We need to have approved this round of policy updates.
Okay.
And we did receive an email today saying, have you approved your last policies? Cause you have to approve those, like just today.
Just, okay, all right, so it sounds like we should just keep going.
I would think.
That's fine.
If you can.
No, that's fine, it's light, I just thought I'd try to get us a little more sleep tonight if it was, but that's, we're good. Okay, so then I would look for a motion um for the first reading.
I move to approve the first reading of the following policies as recommended by administration. Five one three zero withdrawal dropout from school, five three one zero dot zero one emergency nursing services, five four one one third grade promotion and retention at-risk students. Five five oh five academic honesty, five five three zero student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. Seven four four zero dot zero three small unmanned aircraft systems drones, seven four five zero property inventory, seven four five five accounting system for capital assets. Eight one two zero volunteers, eight four two zero school safety, eight five zero zero school nutrition services, eight five one zero wellness. Eight five three one free and reduced meals, eight five four zero vending machines, eight five five five, eight five five zero competitive food sales. Nine one five one use of cameras and other recording devices in locker rooms.
I'll second.
All right, Huey, thank you.
Just a comment, I just want the public to realize, we're not just blowing this off. We kind of talked a little bit about this meeting, cause we knew it was gonna be a long meeting, and we all kind of unanimously, unanimously said. Phew, these are not, it doesn't seem to be anything really big changes either that we had to worry about, so.
Well, well, we'll go through them like we usually do, so, um, but yes, I second what Bruce said. Well, we, well, we'll go through them like we usually do. So, um, but yes, I second what Bruce said, so.
Agreed.
Um.
Yeah, just a reminder to the public, a lot of these are, are just updates based on changes in legislation and policy. Um, so there, many of them are routine and not district initiated, um, or just intra.
In fact, many of the ones in this specific packet, we just reviewed in like April or June. And so it's just.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so, um.
Okay.
Let's, we'll just go through and see, and if anyone has anything that they wanna say about the policies, um, we'll start with that. Okay, so first one, policy five one three zero, um, copy of withdrawal dropout from school. Any updates there? Okay, policy five three one zero point zero one, um, emergency nursing services. Anything there? All right.
Where was that one? Sorry.
Five three one zero.
Okay.
Point zero one.
And that's a replacement policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if I'm going too fast, let me know, cause I don't wanna miss comments. Um, okay, policy five four one one. Um, this is the third grade promotion and retention. We reviewed it in April.
I, I didn't have any questions on this one, but one, as a newer board member, one thing that, um, I, I did ask about is sometimes you'll see the language, um, of like board for like parental notification, and that would not necessarily be this board. Um, our district acts on behalf of the board. Um, so the word board in some of these policies um, comes from state statute, um, and not necessarily like us. Like you wouldn't get an email from Megan or something like that, for example. So, um, something I learned as a part of reviewing policy that sometimes you see a word and you're like, why are we using that? Um, it's usually because of state statute or because we've defined it somewhere else.
Um, as an action that gets delegated to administration kind of thing.
Yeah. So, sorry, that's when I, when I was reading that one, I was like, why are we saying that? But anyway.
That's a great one. The one, I was gonna note that in the new language, um, where it says no later than fifteen days after reading readiness assessment is scored, the board shall provide the results of the reading readiness assessment, but it also says that it's to be provided in the parent's native language. And that, I think, is amazing.
Yeah.
Cause that's, I mean, we're just working on, I mean, if you think of that, if English isn't, you know, the parent's native language, and then they're supposed to help determine what this assessment means and what it means for their child, like, of course, that's gonna be harder to interpret and for, harder for them to support their kiddo. So I just appreciate that.
Yeah.
Language update there. All right, anything else on that one?
No.
All right, so, um, policy five five zero five academic honesty. Anything there?
I do appreciate the addition of, uh, citing AI.
Yeah, they have.
Yeah, I imagine that as we continue to learn, we're gonna see lots more updates to all of the policies that incorporate AI. All right, um, next policy, five five three zero student use of possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. Any updates there? Or discussion? All right, um, policy seven four four zero point zero three, small unmanned aircrafts, AKA drones.
Yeah.
Anything there? I think it's really good that we have a policy regulating that.
Yeah, because a lot of sports do use drones now, so.
Yes. And so just making sure that everything is approved and goes through the proper channels for permission. It's important. All right, next one, um, seven four five zero property inventory. Okay. Um, accounting system for capital assets, seven four five five. After, after my heart, accountant. And I love it. It's, they're just updating the years of service or years at useful life, which probably doesn't mean much to most people.
I had a, a question on, on this one, just, um, when it talks about like the, um, maintaining a capital asset accounting system. Um, I think, I asked, well, what is our accounting system, just so, you know, I can educate myself? And the answer is we use Excel and, um, that in and of itself should speak volumes to our ability to budget and address any financial questions um, that, that you as a community or us as a board has, um, from Erin and Jeff over the years. That's not always easy to do. Um, and then learning that as we, um, work with our auditing firm over the years and have a really strong working relationship with them, um, that because we build good, strong relationships with our partners, um, being able to in the future access um, more of the, more of an official, if you will, um, accounting kind of system to help us do that, not in Excel. So, um, again, paying ourselves forward by the relationships that we have.
Mm-hmm. And, and you can pay a lot of money to have all of that put into a software system. Um, and have, you know, auditors maintain that for you and so it would be another way that we're using in-house skills to maintain that.
Yep. Fiscal responsibility.
That's right. Anything else? Okay, next one, um, eight one two zero volunteers. All right, halfway through in terms of pages. Um, policy eight four two zero school safety. Um, this was the update in the crime statistics. Um, and this was, we actually had the first presentation on this policy or on, that was required because of the state statute. Um, so it feels a little backwards that we're now updating the policy, but we're already.
Glad we're adhering to it.
Exactly, we're already in, so, um, okay, uh, eight five zero zero school nutrition services. It's a long one as I page through my notes here.
Um, I think the only question I had on this one, I circled it, so I must have had a question. And I didn't write words next to it, so there you go. Um, is probably, um, what we mean by compliant medical documentation. Is that um, only like a letter from someone's physician or what constitutes compliant medical documentation?
Yeah, that would be some letter from a physician.
Physician, okay. That's all I had, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right, um, eight five one zero wellness policy. Okay.
I don't think I had, not a, um, a question, but I think just a comment. Um, that as far as a staff wellness program, um, the district uses the real living program, and so, um, I think one, I think it's really important that we are sticking to this and, and I'm not speaking very clearly because it's after ten o'clock, um, being able to provide a resources for our staff that's confidential and meets needs. Um, and so maybe my words are just a reminder that it exists, um, if your staff and watching this and you need, um, assistance anywhere from counseling to, I think, it's like legal support too, and maybe some, um, accounting's help or financial consults, so, um, there's help, so.
Good reminder.
Yeah, I think that's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else on that one? All right, um, policy eight five three one, free and reduced price meals. Again, a lot of these we just reviewed very recently. Okay. Um, eight five four zero vending machines. Um, eight five five zero competitive food sales. Last but not least, nine one five one use of cameras and other recording devices in locker rooms. Okay. Any other discussion on those before we take vote? All right, um, all those in favor of, um, moving forward with our motion on the first reading, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, so we'll have our second reading at the next meeting. Um, okay, so then the last.
Do we have a second reading if we don't make any changes to the first? Okay, sorry, just.
Nope, that's a good question.
A question. You know, it, it could happen. I could figure out what I was gonna write down and didn't, so, yeah, thank you.
And actually, I think I just read in the policy perspective from WASB is that first and second readings aren't required, but they're recommended and, you know, just.
That's, that's true.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, things you learn.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item is, um, the action recommended on WEVA, DCA, Insight School of Wisconsin, student transfers to resident districts.
Um, I move to approve the WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement.
I can second.
Okay. Chapman. All right, any discussion on this?
Super happy to see that there's only one first grader.
Yep, and it's a relatively short list.
Yes.
It is a short list.
One page, yeah. Another one pager.
Yep.
So we have one first grader, one third grader, and then the rest are all five, six, seven, and upwards.
Mm-hmm. All right, awesome. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Last one.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so motion carries. We are adjourned at ten twenty-two PM.